Well, they want somebody that doesn't need money.
That's my point is that we need a public purpose. That's why we buy shoulders.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's planning board meeting. Thank you for taking the time and opportunity to show up. We have, let me see, a few orders of business here before us, before we proceed. So, just a few moments of patience on your end would be greatly appreciated. Board members, you have an agenda before you at this point, and I would accept a motion to approve said agenda. Yes, ma'am? That's entirely up to you guys what you want to do. I mean, I'm...
It may be late night, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that. You want to...
Someone in here right now.
Yeah, do you want to move those ahead then? Yeah, go ahead, make the motion then.
I'll make a motion to put the A and Rs and the secondary dwellings at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, and then with the rest of the agendas submitted, correct?
Yep.
Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. All right, first order of business before us is a number of A and Rs dealing with the town of Nantucket. They're consecutively marked seven, six, eight, five through seven, six, eight, nine. Andrew, would you like to...
Mr. Chairman, as I have outlined in the staff report, the majority of these are paper street parcels, so they are... They fall under the category of conveyance parcels. So, if you have any questions about any individual ones, that's fine, but I would recommend that we move ahead with all of them.
Yeah. Board members, is there anything you'd like to isolate out from this mix? Hearing nothing at this point.
I'll make a motion to endorse seven, six, eight, five, eight, six, eight, seven, eight, 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 nine, Town of Nantucket.
Great, and do I hear a second?
Per staff recommendation.
Thank you. That motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
What is that noise?
That is the projector coming down. There we go. Yes, ma'am, sir. Yes? John, you're notorious for telling everyone else to use that microphone, so I'm gonna...
In the future, I'd like, perhaps, we make a motion, discuss it, that all A and Rs, if they're approved, if they're aye, are signed by the chairman only. Saves a lot of time going back and forth for us to go to the office and sign ours. This is for the future.
Yeah, I think we can raise that at a future meeting, in terms of a policy level decision. Thank you. All right, there are four secondary dwellings before us, and I might suggest that we take these individually at this point. First thing before us is Tracy Reed McDonald, Trustee of Three Cow Pond Lane Nominee Trust. Board members, is there any discussion on this, or...
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Next thing is Long Path Nominee Trust, eighty-seven Hummock Pond Road.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Susan Jemison...
Mr. Chairman, the applicant here has... Our staff recommendation was to not move forward without an appropriate site plan. The applicant has informed us they wish to withdraw and are not proceeding with the project.
Okay.
Okay, we'll step it up, prejudice, is that what you mean?
Yes, if you would.
I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice on Jemison, five C Street.
And do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Next thing is Gloria Jurecki on nine E Street LLC. Andrew, I'm just gonna turn this to you for a second, because I guess there were one or two revisions that had to be made.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The most basic reference is the decision talked about the intersection of E Street with Maticat Road, and in fact, it's E Street and Washington Avenue, so we're asking that the board just formally vote to correct that reference. There was a request to modify the clearance level. The road itself is, I don't believe, is wider than fifteen feet, and there's a sixteen-foot clearance, so we do feel that the twelve-foot clearance is adequate. The street serves a very limited number of properties. There was a question about whether or not there should be the apron at the end of the road. We don't feel that that should be changed. There is existing evidence that it's muddy and tracking shells and gravel out into the road now, so that is a standard requirement for when dirt roads are upgraded. So, we agree with the first two, but we recommend, staff recommends you don't take action on the latter request.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve changing the intersection from Maticat Road and E Street to Washington Avenue and E Street, and having the clearance at twelve-foot width, and not to change the requirement for the apron going from E Street to Washington Ave.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, everyone. That returns us back to our public hearings at this point. The first thing that'll... There are three that are continued at this point, seventeen thirteen, nineteen thirteen, and twenty thirteen. So, that brings us to our first agenda on the item now at thirty-six dash thirteen, which is Pharaoh's Seventeen Broad Street LLC.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but on number nineteen thirteen, Brian Ryder...
Yes, sir.
He's asked for an extended continuation. If we could extend that to ten, one, fourteen, that would be appreciated.
Do all of them need to go?
Yeah, they actually all do.
Otz, Ryder, and Whelan sixteen. I think all three of them need to go.
October sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. Just all three.
I'll make a motion to extend the time for action on seventeen thirteen, nineteen thirteen, twenty thirteen, Otz, Ryder, and Whelan, respectively, to ten, one, twenty thirteen.
Okay. Motion's now made in second for discussion.
Fourteen. Yay!
There you go. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. My apologies. All right, that brings us back to thirteen sixteen, which is Pharaoh's Seventeen Broad Street LLC for the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Alger.
Good evening, Sarah Alger for the applicant. With me, Paul Santos, project engineer. Matt McKeckern, who's our architect, and also three of the principals, Jeremy and Alex Leventhal and Elliot Gould. You have a draft decision that's been in your packet, I think remains largely unchanged since the last meeting. The two things that I wanted to point out that changed as a result of our kind of going back and forth and refining our plan with the HDC is that our open space now is at thirty point three percent, so we are meeting the thirty percent. And the ground cover changed just slightly, it's three thousand one hundred and thirty square feet. Otherwise, I know that there were some other minor revisions to the document that had been made through staff, and we're fine otherwise with the decision.
Okay. Thank you. Did Mr. Santos have anything, or should we move right to the board?
Do we have anything we need to...
No, other than maybe this is the most... This is the board's decision. It's not the...
Thank you.
That has the ground cover and the open space number revision.
Thank you. Board members on the application? Yeah, we'll do that momentarily.
Mr. Chairman, I had two questions...
Yes, sir.
...through you, if I might.
Yep.
Sarah, one thing you had brought to my attention was the schedule on the construction.
Oh, right, yes. I hadn't... That was not in the decision, but it should have been, the prohibition against summer construction. And I think the board has established a policy on set dates for that.
We do. We have a standard policy now. I'm looking at Sylvia, I believe we did, and it was voted.
Yes, she did. You did, it was a...
Just July one.
It was before July one, but it was after... It's in late... It's in late June, mid to late June.
Right.
Whatever that date is perfectly fine with us.
So, we would put our standard policy on that.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I noticed on your height, part of the waiver requirement for the planning board is dependent on an HDC approval of height. And I think there was a plus or minus, and I know that we want to be careful considering some past experience with plus or minus in height.
Correct.
So, I didn't know if that had been set, but if the board does adopt a height standard, I think it should include any possible, you know, should have a, maybe, an inch or two of allowance here, so we don't get into the plus or minus rehearings that we had in the past.
Correct.
Yeah.
I would agree.
And is, Mr. Chairman, one follow-up?
Please.
The height is... Is there's the elev... It's the elevator...
It's the elevator mechanical.
That's really the main height issue, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we did explore, we attempted to explore ways to eliminate that entirely, and we're not able to find a way that worked efficiently, that did that and still allowed use of that third floor. So, that's why that remains.
Okay. Go ahead.
That's just what I was headed towards, whether the height, we're talking about the height that we're looking at at the HDC, which should be done next week, to the top of the elevator shaft or the top of the main mass. And you're saying that the height that we're working with here is the top of the elevator shaft, because really, none of that's changing at so far at the HDC.
Correct.
Correct. The thirty-eight, the thirty-eight plus or minus reference in the decision is the top of the elevator shaft. When you look at drawing eight two point one, those dimensions are defined, the top of the elevator shaft and the top of the flying is defined by the half point.
What's the top of the main mass? Isn't that like thirty-two?
Thirty-three, seven and a half.
Technically, I'm not even sure that that elevator shaft counts towards height, but to be safe, because penthouses on buildings to the extent necessary for mechanical purposes, not higher than eight feet, and with area less than twenty-five percent of the building ground cover, do not count toward height under one thirty-nine seventeen B two. So, I'm kind of on the fence as to whether it counts. I'd rather have the relief, just to be sure, so we don't get tripped up.
I agree.
Right, and I think, though, that we might want to have a finding that it does meet that by the board, which might be in addition to the... Yep.
Okay.
So, I think we might want to cover it both ways, just in case.
All right. Which raises, which goes back to what I asked earlier. I think the decision should reflect the height of the main mass and then the height of the elevator shaft, so you know that we're not out of control on the main mass. It's the elevator shaft that's pushing it over. So, Sarah, you need to split those two.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Marklager.
I have a few things.
Yes.
I noticed we have a nice site plan, but on all these plans, architectural plans, it says that the information was taken from the Nantucket GIS, and that'll be verified by surveyor afterwards. I mean, we're already there, right?
You are. That's actually a standard note we put on our drawings if we're working out for GIS, but the architectural is sort of reflective of the site survey.
So, we could take that note off?
You could strike that, correct.
Okay. Then, the other thing I noticed is, there's not gonna be any site plan review by an engineer? That's one of the waivers?
I think we're doing it as part of this process.
Right. Who, wasn't Mr. Pesci, or?
Mr. P...
Well, I mean, somebody, did somebody look at it engineering-wise, or?
No.
No?
They requested the waiver, and I think our discussion had been that it wasn't required.
You didn't... Nobody thinks it's required, except me? Okay. Then, the other one is G one thirty-nine thirty, special permit. What's the special permit for, I'm wondering?
Oh, one thirty-nine thirty is just the general special permit requirement of the bylaw. So, any special permit that you grant under any provision of the bylaw has to meet the standard of one thirty-nine thirty, which is just the special permit section.
Okay, thanks, I understand that.
And I should have mentioned, for some reason, when we did the draft decision, I had put Mr. Bor... I don't know why, I just put Mr. Borshard in as the alternate, but I don't think you have, you have to enact, you know...
Yes.
Activate someone, and I didn't mean to presumptively enact Mr. Borshard. I don't know why that happened.
Not a problem. Board members, is there anything else?
No, yeah, I'm not...
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't need to cut you off.
No, no, that's okay. Then, I see that you don't submit final plans till six months from the date of approval? Are they gonna be the same as the ones with proven?
There's still HDC review, so there might be changes. We allow some...
Okay, but not in the footprint, is what I'm thinking.
No, our footprint is gonna be what it is.
Okay. And then, on the last thing, the contribution of ten thousand dollars? I didn't think that was enough. I mean, you know, I think...
You haven't really gotten yourself...
Yeah. No, I understand, I'm just saying, I think it should be more. And I also think the payment should be made thirty days after the approval, not after the approval of the certificate of occupancy. In other words, after the planning board approval, not after the certificate of occupancy.
You're saying it would be prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, maybe...
No, no, I understand.
But you want it sooner, so I would suggest saying prior to...
Prior to the issuance of building permit, yeah.
Correct.
That's what I meant to say.
That would be...
That's okay.
That would be fine.
What about the more money part?
How much more money are you suggesting?
Well, originally, before the parking change, before the zoning change, I should've thought it should've been a pretty dramatic amount of money.
Right.
But I was thinking like twenty-five thousand, not ten thousand.
For downtown sidewalk improvements?
Yeah.
Would that include the... Because we're already redoing the sidewalk in front of our building.
It doesn't, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like very much money for sidewalk improvements, for construction. You don't get much done for ten thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we set the amount with the understanding that they did have to fix the sidewalk in front and close the curb cut, reconstruct what was immediately, and contribute something towards what might be done, you know, again, surrounding their property. We have to, we have a rational nexus that we need to stay within. If you all have a construct to expand that, you know, you need to understand, though, it needs to be related to...
I understand, okay.
So, you know, you're free to come up with that. I mean, that's a suggestion that we made based on likely work that would occur around the site, in addition to what they're doing, but...
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Board members, anything else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing at this stage, so if anyone would like to comment on this, I ask you to please come forward and identify yourself. Okay, seeing no one at this point. Board members, what would you like to do?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Motion's now made in second for... Oh, hang on, before I even do that. Where are you going? Mr. Marklager, I'm gonna activate you for this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, you're duly noted as being recused, ma'am.
Continue, Mr.?
No, sir, the, there was no public comment that was offered at this point. An alternate is now activated. You have the draft decision before you, hearing no public comment at this point. I had a motion from one of the board members to close the public hearing, and that was seconded. So, that's the stage we're at right now. So, do you have any discussion you'd like to offer, Mr. McLaughlin, or? No? Okay. So, the motion now stands that we're made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect, Mr. McLaughlin is opposed to closing the public hearing at this point on a four to one vote. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve with the minor details worked out between the applicant and staff, to be signed in the office. The contribution to the sidewalk fund, is that where we are now? Made prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Motion's now made in second. Discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect that that is a four to one vote, with Mr. McLaughlin in the opposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the time that the board and staff have taken over the last few months to get this to the place that it's in. I think it's gonna be a beautiful project, and I appreciate everything that you all have done.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next thing before us is zero three one four, which is W JG Realty Company LLC, twenty-one and thirty-one Sparks Ave., forty-seven Sparks Ave., fifty-one Sparks Ave.
Yes, it was.
That was short-lived.
Yes, it was. Sarah Alger for the applicant. The whole gang is here. Mike McNeese, our project engineer, Deb Farr, Randy Hart, Bill O'Brien, and some people from the store. So, hopefully, here to answer any questions you may have. Since the last meeting, we've refined, I think, the site plan, and a draft decision has been circulated. I don't know if you've had a chance really to look at it. I know that Andrew had some input that he was making to it, and we have just a couple of minor points on the phasing. But other than that, I think, I don't know that I have anything new. I don't know if you have questions, or...
All right, so if there's nothing from your team, let me turn it over to the board, and I see Andrew wanting to...
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that in the audience, we have Ed Pesci, who's here to answer any questions regarding engineering that you might have. And then, Mike Hall is here as well for any traffic-related, if you have any follow-up questions from his traffic report. Could I ask a question again through...
I would, yes, please.
Sarah, I know we discussed some of the implementation measures that are in Mike Hall's report, like the removal of the one parking spot.
Yes, and that we've incorporated into the decision, the removal of the most northerly parking spot, closest to Pleasant Street there on the westerly side. The ability to have two control people when the trucks are entering the loading zone, if that's determined to be necessary. I think you had suggested by the board in conjunction with the traffic consultant. I think that tweak needs to be made to the decision, but the bones of it are in there.
Right.
I know the sizing of the grease trap is something that will have to happen as part of the plumbing work, and that's built in here in the six-month plan submission. And I think there was one other point that Mr. Pesci had raised.
Monitoring wells.
The what? Oh, the monitoring wells, we're gonna address them. There are monitoring wells currently on the site, and we're gonna determine which ones need to stay and what's gonna happen with them.
Was there anything else, Mr. Pesci?
Mr. Chairman, I must say that the applicant's engineer team has worked diligently to address every question and every comment I had. They've made some revisions in the current plan set. As Ms. Alger has said, that there's only a couple minor items. I read through the draft decision, and as it's written, requiring, you know, revised plans for my review on behalf of the board, I'd see no problems whatsoever. And I certainly endorse moving forward if you so desire.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hall, did you have anything for us as well? I mean, I know you've been through things. We've got your report at this point, so it seemed pretty straightforward and direct. Okay.
As long as we have that addressed by the applicant.
Thank you, and we appreciate the work that you did, and I know Michael helped you with that as well, too, so thank you. Board members, yes, Linda?
The one thing we really haven't looked at has been the planting plan, which I have opened.
Yep.
We've been so concerned about the building, the size, all that other stuff, that we haven't really looked at the planting plan or the lighting plan.
Mm-hmm.
I know a lot of that stuff's gonna be coming through the HDC when it comes in. I just didn't want to put, get you caught between an HDC requirements and a planning board requirement, so it might be worth the rest of us looking at this to see if there's anything that gets called out before it gets back to the HDC and we have something else entirely going on.
I...
And I think the only, my only concerns here are that some of these things are...
Yeah, this is the time to raise them.
Some of these things are at grade. I assume the little triangle coming off of Sparks is at grade, so you can drive over it like you can, that other little rotary thing. And I know John, at one point, had mentioned where you're backing, going up and then backing the truck in, that that island right there is reduced in size. Remember that we talked about that? Or that this become at grade also on that corner?
I think it's best that you point, the landscape plan is up on the...
What is your question?
That little island there coming off of Sparks, is that grade, correct? So, you can drive over it?
Yes, yep.
It's just there to show where you're going?
It's just to delineate the two driveways.
And I know John, at one point, had brought up the fact that island that's directly in front of the loading zone?
Yes.
Be somehow reduced or be able to drive over that corner?
We went back and forth with that, and the last, I think...
Is that one, the lower one?
Right. The last I heard was everybody was okay with the way it is, because the trucks can maneuver without having to cross over that island.
I just didn't want a high curb.
We can, we can, we can change that, I think. Either through Mr. Pesci or Mr. Hall, I'd like to...
I was just gonna add, for the benefit of the board...
Yes, sir.
There are a couple of things I did comment about, and they have addressed in the current comments. One is lighting, one is landscaping.
Uh-huh.
So, for the benefit of the board, in the southern area, Michael and I had this discussion in the southern area, at the southern exit, the southwesternmost exit, I was gonna say in front of the current wine and spirit shop there, you know, that exit there, that corner, there's a number of trees that are planted along that area, and that's the one area that I wanted to make sure, and he's now showing with the cursor that area. I was concerned about the site, the site distance as you're exiting that southerlymost corner. So, they've added a note to the plans that requires that there be a, you know, evaluation of site distance there. It's also conditioned in your plan, in your decision, that any landscaping within fifteen feet of the intersection be no higher than three feet, so there shouldn't be any issue there. The landscape architect and I had a brief discussion that trees could be specimen trees with the, with the height of limbs above the sight line, shouldn't be any issue, but your decision certainly carries some weight to solve that. The other thing I had asked about was, in the lighting plan, that they provide a detail of the light, and that'd be dark sky compliance, that there's a vertical cutoff. And then, they provided a detail on the current set of plans. So, it's on the, on the, one of the detail sheets, engineering detail sheets now, and in my response, report from last week, I'll just read for the members of the board here. Proposed streetlight has been added to sheet C seven indicating a downlight configuration by Cooper Industries Light Bar LED. So, I don't see a problem with what they're proposing. Here's a, here's a picture of that detail, all LED lighting, but don't see a problem with the, everybody's manufacturing vertical cutoff fixtures. Nobody, pretty much nobody's doing street lighting any other way these days, so... much nobody's doing street lighting any other way these days. So, anyway, so just for the benefit of the board, I wanted you to know that I brought those two comments to their attention, and they've addressed them.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
No, it's okay.
I'm going to take myself back to the LED lighting, which is not something the HDC has been known to approve, because the nature of the light is so bizarrely different. And you're looking at a light fixture that has no bulb in it, which is also not necessarily approvable. So when you do get to the HDC level, I don't want us to condition on that here, just the placement of the lights, I think I'm more comfortable with, because you're going to be talking to us at length about that at the HDC level.
Okay.
But I think the placement of the lights, I wanted to make sure that the entrances are lit, because right now, if you're at nighttime coming down Sparks Avenue trying to turn left off of Sparks-
Right.
You hopefully don't miss the entrance. No light there.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure that the entrances at least have lights that you can get in and out of safely. Otherwise, if there's any way to minimize lights in the parking lot, that'd be the better part of valor. But I think the placement of the lights are appropriate.
Right. When we go with the lower height lights, it requires more light poles to get the required safety coverage.
And the other thing that we're missing on here is the cut-through to the other parking lot. It's not showing up on our ancillary site plans.
It's not, right. We don't have the authorization to do that at this point. We're working to try to get that cut-through. We've had lots of concepts where we've shown it, we're willing to do it, that the parking lot's been designed to accept that when, when it does occur. But we need the approvals of the butters next door.
Andrew, is this not something we can include in the decision about the cut-through?
The, the cut-through is addressed in the decision, so there's a, there's a condition-
Yep.
-that refers to it, and it would be something that would appear on the plans in the six months that they have to bring it forward.
But in the decision, it's not requiring that they have it before they can start pulling building permits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because it's just something we've pushing all along.
It's required prior to the CO for the final building.
And if they can't get it, they have to come back to us and modify that condition?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. I assume the materials that are on the site plan are going to be left up to the HDC to deal with, or get some direction off of this plan basically?
Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yeah.
I think, you know, the, the extent to which we tie the approval to a specific plan will dictate that. I don't know how much time you at this board want to argue about flower specimens and other things. I mean, it's not really something that we usually get into. I think that we want to see the quality and the level of planting that's shown on the plan. But I think usually we let the Historic District Commission handle some of those other details. So unless they are completely at odds with, with the general intent of the site plan.
Correct.
If they were to require no landscaping, we would obviously have a problem, so.
Absolutely.
I have just one more question. Right now, I think south of the existing store, there is a sidewalk below the bank. You know, where the parking goes up on the south side of the store?
There's a, there's, yes, there's a sidewalk on the other-
It looks like you've removed it. Or is that just a different surface?
Um, you're talking about right by the Cumberland Farms?
No, I'm looking at where the store is right now is right here.
Oh, yes, we have removed that sidewalk. We're trying to promote pedestrians to cross at that crosswalk by the front entrance, rather than try to cross that front entrance, because there's no sidewalk on the north side of Sparks Ave. And we're trying to promote everybody using the sidewalk that's on the south side of Sparks Ave to pass down Sparks Ave.
I think I made a comment about that. I've been pretty consistent about that, a comment about that sidewalk from the beginning, only because I've had eight kids at the Boys and Girls Club, and they have all come down that side of the street and come across the front of the, the gas station and then hit that parking lot, hit that sidewalk, and then come up. Are you supposing that they're going to walk through the other parking lots to get there without having to go out onto the street from the Boys and Girls Club?
There's no, there is no sidewalk on the north side once you leave our property. And, you know, we're essentially sending people down to a place that, that got nowhere to go.
That's where they have the sidewalk now.
Now, I, let me-
So I'm just concerned about the removal of a sidewalk that's always been there. And that's only about a, what, a forty-foot section?
I think staff would like to address it, and I know I'd like to address it too, kind of being in that neighborhood on a just everyday basis. So go ahead, I'll let you-
Mr. Chairman, we, from the testimony that we heard at the public hearing, we prioritized continuing the sidewalk, which is shown. It's an eight-foot brick sidewalk extending down and into the entrance to the Stop &amp; Shop. The existing sidewalk that goes beyond that point would bring pedestrians into the two entrances onto Sparks Ave. The sidewalk that's there is in, you know, is a four-foot sidewalk. It's in terrible condition right now. And usually when that happens, we get a raft of complaints. Why isn't that sidewalk fixed? The point is, and then if you look beyond it, you go before the front of a gas station with two exits, in front of the Seagrove without an end, a functioning entrance, and then you, and no sidewalk. You come to the Craig property with no sidewalk, and you come to the Boys and Girls Club with no sidewalk. So I think that that sidewalk is not necessary. We talked about gradually improving the sidewalk on the south side of Sparks, which is where all the businesses are, which is, which is the current route anyway. And again, I don't, after hearing the testimony that we heard about dangers to pedestrians, I don't know why we would encourage them to go into those two main entrances and exits. So.
Thank you. And just as one member of this board, I'd have to concur with you at this point. Ever since we've done the sidewalk improvements by the Cumberland Farms area and by the gas station, especially at two thirty in the afternoon, you see the kids using that almost religiously. I dare say to you that, given the dynamics of, of the, the infrastructure to walk on the other side of the road by, by where the Shell Station is, I mean, that sidewalk is narrowly abandoned at this point. People just don't use it. And I think that, that, that says a little bit too about, you know, the work that we've put into about trying to improve the streetscape structure on that side of the road. So I hear what Mr. Vorse is saying, and I think from a staff level, they're, they're spot-on target here, that trying, trying to do this would, would be, again, unless you're, you're destined to want to somehow build a sidewalk that's going to run between the Boys and Girls Club and there, I haven't heard any proposals for that. I've seen nothing on a staff level. I've seen nothing in the Mid-Island reports that we've done in the past. So I, this will be the first I'm hearing for a plan for that to happen. I don't think it's a prudent idea from a safety perspective.
Well, just as a note, when the Craig property comes in, and the piece across the street from it come in for development, I'm going to be back on to the sidewalk issue again, because what you don't want to do is drive all those kids back across the street after the cop has left, in order to get down to the Stop &amp; Shop, in order to come back across the street. I know I've caught a lot of the kids going through the Craig property, backdoor into the Stop &amp; Shop. That's what they do now. They don't cross over again and then cross back again. But I'm just saying, as it gets down the road and the Craig property starts to take shape and everything else starts to take shape, I think we need to think about that sidewalk.
Or, or the other thing maybe is that if that's truly going to happen, we're going to have to wait to see what happens with the Craig property. Maybe what we need to do is think about a walking path that'll go straight from the Boys and Girls Club through that property, as opposed to pointing it externally to, to right where the roadway is.
And, and Mr. Chairman, that is in your, I mean, it's, that particular plan, I mean, I suppose is still up for modification since they haven't gotten a building permit.
Correct.
But it did require a sidewalk on the western part and a connector down to the, to Boys and Girls Club. But it was directing people over to Pleasant, not continuing them along that side of Sparks.
Yep. All right. Is there anything else from the board at this point? Mr. McLaughlin?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Three times I've mentioned about this project, one thing. Some constituents, three of them, came to me and they had a question. They asked if I could do something. I said, I'll do my best. Twice I've asked Mrs. Alger, and once I've asked one of the representatives here. They would like to know the height of the building. I said, reposition. And I asked, and they said they would do it.
One was here, I think it's eighteen feet. One could be here, should be the center, but it could be here because it's out of the parking area. That one, I don't know what the height for that is, most of the peak. And the other one, it's where this one is here, go over here.
Agent Hawn, will you get the general idea of the height? And I, I thought it was a good idea, and I would like to see the stake before Andrew can give, give approval. Maybe have him at the next meeting.
I think Ms. Alger's got an answer for you, or at least a comment. Please.
I do have, I do have a comment. Mr. McLaughlin is correct. He has asked for those polls. We are trying to figure out a safe way to do it. There's been a concern raised about the safety of a freestanding pole in a public parking lot. Given the proximity to the fire station, we were worried about wind blowing it either over into the parking and on a customer, or over and blocking access on the fire station. We were talking about doing, like a helium balloon on a day that wasn't windy, but I found that to be sort of an oxymoron on Nantucket. I couldn't think of when a day that wasn't windy would be. So it is definitely something that we're struggling with and that we're attempting to do in connection with our HDC filing. It hasn't, it's not that it's been ignored, it's that it's been problematic to work it out. But we're still talking about it.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. McLaughlin's got the floor.
I'd like to respond to that. Any engineer that's worth his salt knows if you want to do the height for something, use a balloon, like you did up to high school. And you put a stake in the ground, attach it, and put it up to whatever the footage is. That's the easiest way to do it, instead of driving stakes. You can drive one stake for each one. So I would just like to see, to make them people happy that ask. That's my, that's my question.
I agree. Thank you.
Now, could you call the office and let them know when it's there?
Will do.
If I may, Andrew, just let me ask you a question, or maybe Mr. Pesci knows the answer to this. Is, is there a way you could temporarily put those up for just a short period of time, put a public advertisement and say, if people want to see it, there it is, and then bring it down just as quickly? I mean, would that meet all the requirements of, of pulling this off? I'm talking real short-term here.
Or we could do the balloons and leave them up. It's just that the idea was going to be quite windy, and they were going to be kind of-
I agree with you. Yep.
The, this isn't for this board. The discussion about the height poles came up during preliminary hearings for the HDC, which does visibility. It wasn't nothing to do with this board. And because they didn't have a formal application into us, we had four preliminary reviews, and they, I don't know if the applications in, but they're making a formal application to us within the next couple of weeks to the HDC. At that time, the HDC can officially, once it's in and open, make a request to have the height poles put up for the visibility issue, which we have jurisdiction over. So it's premature to tie it to this particular application, because that's coming through a discussion at the other board, which John is also on.
Yeah.
And we can legally ask for it there. And we can set a time limit over that weekend, because we view over a weekend. It's not, they're not up for weeks. They're over, they're up for forty-eight hours and it's done.
Okay.
So I don't really, I'm not comfortable tying this height pole thing and balloons to this particular application in here.
With that-
I don't find it unreasonable request, because it's from the public, and if they want something, the possibility should have it. That's all I'm saying. No, I, I think that something should be put up for this weekend. Just call the office, notify everybody.
Well-
Will you be quiet, please? Let me speak.
Let him, let him finish his conversation. Thank you.
And I, I just think it's unreasonable to do, do it for, for this weekend. Just put something up there. And, and let all the numbers know. The office, thank you.
If, if I may, it, it sounds like, and I agree with kind of what Linda's saying, you don't want two boards doing the same thing twice to do it. So I, I don't know if, if you want to wait until it, this comes before the HDC, but I think one way or another, you, you should be clear in your mind that if, if we're going to do it, this really should just be a one-time thing. If you want this board to implement it, it's going to have to be at, you know, so that the HDC isn't going back at this a second time. I'm not sure how to pull that off. Go ahead, you might have an idea or I don't.
Well, I think that our, our decision, similar to the prior one, would have some allowance for, again, if, if, if the full board is interested in viewing that, then we should, we should require it. I, I think that the Historic District Commission, I see where it would be an important aid for them to finalize the details of what that's going to look like. I, I think for our purposes, I don't think that it's going to change the footprint too much, where I think with, at the HDC, there's still likely to be a whole number of changes on the elevations. So unless the, the majority of the rest of you want to take a look at that height, I, I think the HDC is really the board to handle the final on that.
Yep.
I mean, I see how it's important, but I think that it's probably best addressed in their review.
Yep. Does that-
My only comment is it was dragged on for three times now, it's been a question.
Okay.
I don't want to just see a bypass, and they stop building, and they haven't done it yet. I think it's important for the people that want to know.
And I, I think, I think what you've heard from staff, what I think, go ahead, I don't want to rub your thunder.
We have no trouble agreeing to do it as part of our HDC application as a requirement. Balloons or the poles, whatever, whatever we can get to work best. And we're happy to call your office and alert you, as well as the HDC at the time that they go up. And I think we can do it pretty quickly.
Mr. Chairman, just maybe perhaps to address John's concern, we could put, if they're, agree to that voluntarily, we could put that as a requirement in our decision. But that's done.
That's fine.
Good, I think that'll work.
That's fine.
Thank you. Was there anything else from the board members at this point? Okay, hearing nothing. I'd like to, this is a public hearing, which I'd like to open back up at this point. If you'd please raise your hand, identify yourself to the record when you come to the microphone and where you live. We've heard a lot of public testimony at this point, so I'm going to ask people, please don't go back over the same things we've heard before. We will welcome any new testimony that you have at this stage. So with that in mind, would anyone like to speak on this application? No? Okay. Let me kind of see where, yes. I'm sorry. Do you want, I, I'm asking if the public wants to comment on this, so this is your opportunity.
No.
Woo Kane, eighteen Sparks Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
I'd like to just bring to the board's attention, I know you've been doing the traffic safety report, but I just wanted to let you guys know that the traffic is already starting right now. And if you looked at front of Sparks Avenue in front of my driveway this morning, at ten AM, it was at a standstill up until one o'clock. And I don't see how that plan is going to work. I just wanted to bring it to you all's attention.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this? All right, let me just do this for a second. Board members, um, board members? Excuse me. Thank you, I need your attention for a second. My question to you is, is, is there outstanding issues that you feel that we need to be addressing on a board level at this point? Or do you feel as though that you've got enough information to kind of proceed ahead? You've had an opportunity to deal with the draft decision. I haven't heard a lot of back and forth between either our engineer or the traffic engineers at this point, which was relatively new data. I think we've resolved some of the landscaping issues. I think we've resolved the, the ridge pole thing that, that Mr. McLaughlin was concerned with. I'm not hearing anything else from this board, so I just want to kind of check in with you guys and see if there's anything else that we need to direct the applicant toward at this point. Pardon? There'll be an alternate sitting on this one, yes. Absolutely. Yeah, I think we've, we've heard from Mr. Hall on that. Was there anything else? Because I wanted us to be real clear here at this point, where, where we're at right now, if there's anything else, because if, if there's other things you need to consider, that's going to put us towards June. I'm not hearing a lot of public testimony at this point. So I, I think we've kind of narrowed the focus of those conversations down. I'm not hearing anything from our board, so what I might pro offer to you at the moment is that this is probably- that this is probably the time under which we should consider closing the public hearing and accepting the draft decision. But it's up to you, and this is why I want to flush this out. So Mr. McLaughlin, please.
My comment is, we have here the planning board approve an amendment, which is from staff, I believe, but there is, in a lot of places, these things need dates, and they need footage and all this. Are we going to put something blank?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, what you would do is some, similar to the other decision where you, if you are in a position to close the hearing and vote on this, that would allow final editing, because we have some other dates and, and final plans to insert.
Through staff.
So it would be, you would sign it in the office, if, if that's what you're ready for.
All right. That's okay. Linda, go ahead.
In a second, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I just want to state for the record that if something doesn't work, if the traffic doesn't work, if the parking doesn't work, if the lighting doesn't work, nothing on this is closed forever. It can come back at any time for us to discuss a problem that has arisen, whether it's trash or lighting or anything else. So it is never closed and done with. We can always come back and address a problem that may or may not arise after a full summer of operation, which is where usually the issues occur. So I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, and do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All right, and before I go any further at this point, let me activate Mr. Borshuk for this one. So, motion's now made in second. Is there discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect, that's a four to one vote with Mr. McLaughlin opposed to closing the public hearing.
And I'll make a motion to approve 0314 WJG Realty Company LLC, 21 and 31 Sparks Avenue, 47 Sparks Avenue, 51 Sparks Avenue. Do we need an extension on this, or are we okay on the 31st?
You're okay.
Okay.
Aside from extension, please.
Okay, and I will make that motion to approve with the final plans and the final edit on the decision being worked out with staff and the applicant, and to be signed in the office.
Beautiful. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All right, that motion's now made in second. Is there discussion on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Let the record reflect, that's a four to one vote with Mr. McLaughlin opposed. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Again, thank you very much. This, particularly to the staff and all the engineers and the board for the time.
Yep, thank you. Next thing before us is 05-14, which is Heather Creek LLC, 324 and 326 Maticet Road for the applicants. Mr. Bodat, I see approaching the microphone.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodat for the applicant Heather Creek LLC.
Sure.
I'm here tonight with one of the owners, David Scribner, and the general manager, Aiman Banks. As many of you will remember, you heard a lot of comments from the public at the last hearing. We, we took those comments to heart. I spoke with my clients, and they, they in turn reached out to a lot of the Maticet neighbors. And we've come up with some proposals that we hope can be, you can condition the permit on, that will make some of the neighbors and Maticet residents happy, and, and allow you to approve this application. I think it's important to note just how far we've come in this application. We filed it quite a long time ago. And if you remember, the original application was for 129 seats, then 127, and then we settled on 124, because Richard Ray indicated that that is our septic capacity. Our proposal was to have outdoor seating of up to 55 seats, an outdoor bar on the deck, and expand the deck, as well as to have six to eight private events in, in the shoulder season outside of July and August. From the February public hearing, we heard the, the neighbors and some of the board's concerns. We eliminated the request for the outdoor bar. We also, through reading some of the neighbors' concerns that were written, by the time we got to the April public hearing, had eliminated the outdoor events as well. I, I believe most of the concerns last hearing were related to parking, and there were also a number of concerns, folks, related to the deck and the expansion of the deck, and the seating on the deck. This was not in my, my letter of last week, because we've just been working with some of the neighbors last week, but I can tell that we, we will eliminate the expansion of the deck. Even though it's, it's only 36 square feet, I think the reaction to it from some of the neighbors was visceral. And I think if you look back at the special permits, it's an issue that has gone on a long time. And so what we're proposing now, the only thing we're left with is the 124 seats and the seating outside behind the restaurant. Again, still up to a maximum of 55 seats. Some of the, of the conditions that we're willing to place on the permit would be to prohibit, prohibit employees from parking there at all. We expect, we'd expect our employees to take the shuttle from town, or the NRTA bus. We would also purchase NRTA passes for the summer for all of our employees. That's something that we've never done before. In addition, we propose to hire a parking attendant. That's a, that's something that came up a lot at the last hearing, and we're certainly willing to do that. We, you know, we, we want to make the neighbors as happy as, as we possibly can. We want to be good neighbors. And I think hiring a parking attendant might go a long way. This person's function would be to direct people to proper parking spaces, and to prohibit people from parking on the bike path, which I think people indicated was, was a concern last time. You know, we would expect this person to, to tell someone who parks on the bike path that we're going to call the cops before the neighbors do this summer if they, if they park on the bike path. We don't want our patrons parking on the bike path. As an added function, what we'd like the, a parking attendant to do is perhaps survey where these cars are parking, and, and where the people are coming from the cars. I know some of the discussion last meeting was related to Millie's contributing to the parking issues out there, but not being the sole contributor. It's, it's the beach, it's, it's other matters. Obviously, a busy night at, at Millie's exacerbates that. But we'd like to get some, some information related to that, obviously, and we think it might be helpful for the, the neighbors and, and the board. And so what we're hoping is that we can perhaps find some way to, to survey the, the vehicles that are parking there, note whether they, whether those people between the hours, and again, I'm talking about a parking attendant between the hours of, say, five and eight, five and nine, are the busiest time there. Note whether those people who park on the street walk into Millie's. Note whether they come down for the sunset. And I think that's information that we think might be useful to the board. We propose coming back to the board for a public hearing, maybe September, October, whenever the first in the fall is, after the restaurant closes, to revisit it. Talk to the board, listen to the neighbors about what's happened there this, this year. And hopefully, we'd have some data about where these people have been going. In addition, you know, in my letter to the board, that we, we would love to have the opportunity to park off-site. That's something that came up last hearing as well. We, we approached a number of likely candidates. We checked with Maticet Marine, we checked with the Admiralty Club, the trust that owns the vacant parking lot for the beach. And no one would allow us to, to valet there, or to park our cars there, our employee cars there. We, we did check with the owner of the old tennis club. There is a lot there that we could use. That's still under the commercial special permit previously at Seven South Cambridge. We would like the opportunity to, to be able to valet if necessary, or park employee cars, park overflow parking there. Again, during, during the busiest times of the evening, not all day, you know, in an organized, insured way. Again, you know, we, we propose that as, as an interim solution, hopefully, and, and something that we could come back and revisit with the board, see, see if it works. I'm not, I don't know if the board would want to condition the permit on it, but it's something we're certainly willing to do. And just, you know, I want to tell you the other efforts that we've made as well. I, I called the engineer for the DPW to discuss the fact that people, you know, it came up last hearing, that a lot of people put fences on, on Washington and Vaticet Road, in, within the town layout. They indicated that they were, didn't have the staff to address the issue, but that if we were willing to help, perhaps survey the street, that they'd be willing to send letters to those, those owners, telling them that they shouldn't be putting their fences in the layout, and thereby potentially creating a, a better parking situation out there. So obviously, that's, I think that's more of a long-term solution, but it's certainly something we're willing to help with. And the NRTA as well, I know a, a lot of the residents indicated that it, the fact that the bus is parked directly in front of Millie's, between the two parking lots, potentially creates a dangerous situation at times when it's busy at Millie's. And, and I talked to them as well. It, you know, they're about to get going for the summer, but they indicated that they, as well, would be willing to work with us. They, they indicated they had never received any complaints about the location of it. However, they said they might be willing to move that as well. So to the extent that might create a safer situation, we'd certainly be willing to work with them, help them in any way they can. So, you know, those are the, those are the things that we want to do to try to help the situation. Like I said, we've, we've really come a long way, and we really, you know, we do care about the neighbors. We, we just want to have a great restaurant that I think everyone loves, and everyone has told you, I think, that, that they love the place. And obviously, even though the, the parking situation, again, isn't necessarily entirely caused by us, to the extent we exacerbate it, we want to help and, and try to own it, and try to solve it to as best we can. And so I know Mr. Scribner wanted to say a couple of words to the board, because he's here tonight, and so I'll let him do so.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is David Scribner, and I'm one of the owners of Millie's. And I wanted to just express the fact that we, I think it was really clearly stated that, you know, our objective here is to, is to really be responsive to the complaints and concerns of the, of the neighbors. We, you know, we think, we're very proud of what we're doing out in Maticet. We think that we've been very respectful in general of, of the entire community there. And we're running a restaurant that's family-based. We don't have a lot of late-night drinking, issues surrounding that. You know, we, we run a shuttle back and forth from town, try to facilitate, you know, smooth operations. And what we're really asking for at this point, you know, we started off asking for, for a decent amount of modifications, but what's happened is, at this stage, we're really just asking for an additional 35 seats, I believe, that matches up with our new septic capacity. And so I think, I want to be really clear with everybody what exactly we're asking for, and the scope of it. We're asking for an additional capacity of 35 seats. And, you know, in some ways, we think this could actually facilitate, or actually, in some ways, we think this may actually help the matter of congestion on the streets, or traffic issues on the streets, because it would create more seats for people to get settled, and there'd be less sort of like overflow, I guess, another way to describe it. But notwithstanding, we, we do understand that, that there is a, a traffic issue out there. And that's what we've been hearing from, from people. And we really do want to come up with a solution. We want to come up with something that, you know, is going to satisfy everybody, where we don't, we want to listen to people's concerns, and we want to, we want to cooperate with the community. So to that end, I think our suggestions to, you know, number one, I think the best viable solution for us at this point would be to try to find some, some off-site parking. And I think that would really, really alleviate a lot of this issue. So that's something that we're, you know, I don't know the stage we're at with that right now. I think we're maybe halfway there. We've made some contacts, we have some, some options, but we really need to continue to explore those options and make sure that they're legal, and that we can do this. But I think that that might be our solution that's right in front of, you know, very close to being there. The other thing is, is that, you know, obviously, Rick spoke to this, is that, you know, we, we want to be able to have an, you know, onsite attendant, I think would do a lot to help sort of make the, smooth out any kind of issues that might be happening. We really think that that would be helpful. But I'm, I'm also here today to hear, you know, anything else that any other neighbors might, you know, things that I don't know about, things that hadn't been brought to my attention before. I'm here to listen, so that's, that's part of the process also, okay? So I just want to thank everybody, and that's it.
Thank you.
And I think I know you probably want to open it up to the public, and your questions, obviously, we can answer. Just to be clear, I think it is 45 seats. It's all right. Just, just to be clear for the record, so. Happy to take any questions.
Great, so let me open it up to my board first. Linda?
How many complaints over the last five years has the police department heard?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many complaints has the police department had? Formal complaints?
I mean, I pulled the formal complaints. It's this thick, because they make visits that we don't know about, which is kind of thankful and interesting. But the fact is, the, the only complaint I saw related to the restaurant in operation was someone parking on the bike path. That's it. And the person was ticketed. The officer came out and ticketed him. I mean, I've reviewed the, the planning board file, the board selection file, and I haven't seen any complaints in there, in the, in the police. And that's why I pulled it. I just wanted to know, you know, has this been, you know, have people been voicing their concerns before now? So, and that's what I found.
It's actually 35. You're going from 89 to 124. That's 35 seats, not 45 seats?
Yeah, that's what I said, 35.
That's what I thought.
At some point in the past, you...
I, you know, I even, I'm so smart, I even writ, I wrote it out, and, and long subtracted it, and came up with 45.
It sounds better at 35.
It's pretty bad, I know.
Anything else?
There was some, there's been a lot of discussion about how do you count the seats? How do you monitor it? How do you police it? I mean, it's not just going to take somebody in the parking lot. Somebody suggested the other day that you actually have a concierge, if it will, or a doorman-type person.
Mm-hmm.
When it is, when it has reached that. There's got to be a cutoff. I think part of the problems the last couple of years, that you're a victim of your success, and there've just been people piling in, walking down from the beach, wherever they're coming from, and it's impossible, you don't have a little clicker at the door, or out on the seats. So I think one of the pieces of discussion over the last several weeks has been, how do you count them, even at 124? And I think we sort of determined what each picnic table can hold. And you have eight picnic tables in the front, and five more in the back. Is that the way they're going?
I think that's, you know, to the extent we, I mean, obviously, if we want to only have 55 people outside, and, you know, obviously, the, a lot, a big concern has been, there are a lot of picnic tables outside. What, what is going to be required, just by virtue of an alcohol license, is that those spaces that we're serving to, alcohol and food, have to be enclosed, like the front portion is, okay? With a rope or whatever. What we're proposing is to have 55 seats in there. And so that would be, if you're counting, we want to count our picnic tables as four. So to the extent that's the case, it has to be, you know, eight in the front, five in the back. I mean, I think it works out to be about 13. So...
But you have to be really diligent if this is going to happen for the summer, because, you know, we can, as you said, we, we should have another discussion about it in September, October.
Right.
After a full summer of operation, where things are getting a lot tighter, and they're going to be monitored and whatnot, that I think somewhere along the line, you're going to have somebody actually watching the head count. Somewhere along that line. So it doesn't get...
Right.
So we don't get where we were last summer and the summer before that. And then they start complaining in the fall, when we have the new hearing, that again, it was over capacity, and again, it was a problem. And for me, the 35 seats extra, you're asking for how many waiver, parking space waivers?
We're asking for a waiver of eight, it turns out to be. Six of those are employees, so to the... Six of those are employees, so to the extent we remove the employees, we really, I mean, I think we still need the waiver, obviously, but really, you could take six away from that, from what we need, because we're telling our employees we're not allowed to park there and giving them nerdy passes.
I think the 35 seats, having worked with the zoning board and issues like this, and having worked with all the original permits when I was on the zoning board, a lot of the substantial portion, if not all of the eight parking spaces, are mitigated by the NRTA, people who take the NRTA out there, people who take your shuttle out there, people who ride bikes out there, people who are area residents out there. So, we have at least four other ways of mitigating the parking for the grant of the eight spaces that are being waived, especially if the employees aren't onsite anymore. So, I'm not as troubled by waiving parking at all, because unlike a lot of places on the Vatican, there are multiple ways of getting to this property that take parking right off the table for a lot of people. So, I think there's a lot of conditions that you've offered right off the bat. I can't think of any more, but I'm sure the public will have something to say. The one thing that has to be said again, and we've mentioned it every time this property has come in here, it will not be a house. It has never been a house. It has been a commercial foods establishment since long before most of us in this room were born. It has expanded. It has naturally expanded. There's been consternation over the expansion, whether it was at the ZBA or in the planning board venue. And I think, finally, there is a successful business there, where it hasn't been successful since it was the one-story Penguin with like 30 seats, or when Vatican Millie sold ice cream, and we bought ice cream out there when we were kids. So, I think we have to craft enough conditions to make it worthwhile to try it for the summer at 124 and see where we are in the fall. Because as I stated earlier on the stop and shop, the permits are never closed. You can always bring it back, have another discussion. If something's not working, then we have to readjust it or come up with more mitigating factors to fix it.
Right.
But nothing is ever written in stone with an MCD permit. That's what a special permit is. You move it around if necessary. So, I'm comfortable with the conditions that have been put up so far, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Sure. Anyone else on the board watching to comment on this? Mr. McGlaughlin, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Markman.
I think it's a request for too much, too quick. Okay? What happened last year, and things out there, probably don't want to happen again this year, and this will not prevent it from happening. I have some questions with the seat, outdoor seating. All right? You have tables and built-on seats that accommodate six people each. Am I correct?
We have, we use picnic tables outside, and there's been a debate all along, Mr. McGlaughlin, as to how many people, how many should be counted for. You could certainly fit six people there. I think if two were children, it's possible.
I'm thinking of one thing, that you can break that down to four-item tables because of one reason. If two people sit on that side, you don't know the two people on this side, you've got to come over and somebody spread out. Excuse me, I'd like to sit here. You have caused problems. You know, I'm just saying, I think that has a lot to do with us saying yes or no, whether we create a problem, which is your problem, not ours. The other one is here, I believe, listening to the public. Here, we have five, on May 5th, we have five application, five letters from people in favor of some changes out there. And we have 25 letters from people that live in the area that object to it. I've always had a feeling, I like to listen to neighbors, if you can take a petition, go ask them 25 people, sign a petition, remove them, if they don't object to it, I might think, well, enlarge your operation. At this time, right now, I think there's a problem with the whole operation, and it's got to be probably run another year and see how it goes this summer, police reports, et cetera, whatever you've got, you know? Any problems, I think it ought to go another year before you request all these dramatic changes out there.
And, you know, I appreciate that, Mr. McGlaughlin, you know, and I just want to address, you know, the, sort of, the number of letters in support and in opposition. I mean, I think, number one, you know, some of those 25 letters have come in, you know, over, and most of them, over the course of, you know, three months, four months now. A lot of the letters in support have come recently. You know, I think that we've talked to a lot of residents out there. Some of them have said, you know, they've changed their mind. Some of them would like to see a compromise, but, you know, aren't sure about it. And some of them will never convince, Mr. McGlaughlin. So, you know, there's some of them that we, that would never sign a petition, obviously. But we can't get all of them, obviously.
One other problem. I've been out there evenings, and it's not the owner's problem in many respects, that the public park on the bike path and down the side street, whatever it is, you know, it crowds, you know? And I know there's a problem with the buses out there, there's a problem with people trying to get down to the beach. And I would make a suggestion, something you might think about, but to protect yourself from criticism, is you start at Millie's Bridge Street. Is Andrew Street?
Ames.
From here, all the way down to where, you go down to Paula Barrett's pier. Both those two streets. You know you can't park on the bike path, you know? So, ask the town, there's no parking in that area. It's going to push the cars off somewhere else, which is not the town's problem, it's your problem. So, you should look into doing something about that, because your problem exacerbates itself. The more crackly a place gets, the more people go, which is, that's business, you know? And any business allows a 5% increase in innocent, I believe, in fear of business. But I think you ought to look into that parking up there. It's going to be disastrous another second year.
Mr. McGlaughlin, and I think, you know, part of what we're trying to say tonight is, even though it isn't entirely caused by us, we do want to try to help solve the problem. We want to try to own the problem. I mean, you know, another point to those letters, sir, are that, you know, a lot of those letters, what I mean when I say many of those letters didn't come in recently, in fact, there's only one negative letter from the Weldens since the last hearing. And I think that's a reflection of the fact that we've changed the application. You know, we came in with a lot, and I think, you know, the fact is, the reaction was visceral, and people noted it, right? And I think some of those people I expect to hear from tonight, don't get me wrong. But I think some of those people's minds have changed. You know, they've seen that, you know, some people had a problem with the tents, and maybe they don't have a problem anymore. So, I think it could be a number of reasons why there aren't as many in support. I mean, what happens is people, people who support the restaurant don't necessarily show up, and they don't always write a letter, even though they don't care.
You have my opinion. Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Markman.
No, I'm also, Linda covered everything I wanted to ask.
Okay, great. Anyone else on the board? Andrew, did you have anything?
Now, just a couple of things. Rick, thanks for all the diligence and reaching out and everything else. This parking attendant thing is a good idea. We didn't talk about that. That's great, because that will eliminate the bike path issue completely, unless the person decides to go swimming or something, because that's great, you know? Now, what about the bus stop? Did you talk to Paula about the bus stop?
I did. I did. And she, you know, she was more than...
I was listening. I didn't hear you talk about that.
Can you let Mr. Wall have the floor, please?
I did. I talked to Paula, and what she said was, you know, we're about to start running service in a week or two. So, it's, you know, it's kind of rough timing for us to start changing the bus stop, but she was more than happy, more than willing to look at it, I mean, which I think is great. You know, obviously, we don't need to have it right in front, you know, right in front of our stop, and if they can move it down 100 feet, sorry, 100 yards or something, something that makes more sense, that's, you know, a better solution for traffic purposes, then of course, we're all for it, and we'll facilitate it. You know, to the extent, you know, there needs to be a new turnoff that we could landscape or something, I mean, maybe that would help them.
Well, if you recall, three years ago, the bus stop was actually seen as a positive, as part of the whole...
Yeah, I know.
You know, less cars, et cetera.
Sure. And I think it still is.
And we were talking about screening of those, the front seats, and that was really the only discussion, and I think Barry Sunset thing, and that was, that was it. We weren't thinking about the bike, the bus stop as a negative, you know what I mean? But during the day, and this is what your parking person needs to do, is take notes, okay? Because people don't, aren't out there all the time, unless you live out there, but when the beach is busy, it would be nice to know how many cars are parked in the same places that they park for Millie's, whether it's on Ames Street and Washington Street. I know they don't park way down Washington Street, you know, on the beach, but they're parking on the other end of Washington Street and Vatican Road. You know what I'm saying? That's what I'm talking about. And, I mean, if that beach wasn't eroding so badly, and there was public restrooms, and it was like Surfside, for example, it would be busy out there. There'd be a lot more people going out there. I mean, I, you know, I don't mean to say it negatively, but it's going to be beachfront property out there pretty soon. I mean, there's a lot of other things I'd be worried about if I was living in Vatican to Millie's, but that's just me. But as far as the no complaints, I mean, that's a huge issue, okay? And that's one of the things that I like to talk about, about these special permit issues. When you have a place like, and bringing up the summer house again, I'm sorry, but I'm going to say the same thing, that's not under a special permit. So, if they get complaints, they don't have to open up a public hearing and have all the abuddhas notices and turn it into a big, big issue. Yes, it's a, it can be a big issue at selectmen level, but it's usually police department, private attorney's hired, all kinds of things have to happen to get it to that level. So, and something, and this is a small request in what was going on out there in the last couple of years, and that's really the real issue. There was never 89 people in there when they're busy. There was more than that. I don't think they, I don't think anyone is disputing that. And like Linda said, the counting issue was the problem. It's not an airplane. You cannot just count every person like you can on a plane or a fine dining restaurant. So, this is sort of a reset button for Millie's. You have to count the people somehow, not right to the exact strain, you know, right to 124 exactly. You know, you can't tell a family to leave if they got one person, you know, one kid makes it 125. But there has to be some way to get a reasonable count all evening, okay? That's, we have to do that. I mean, we've been back, this is a big deal. We can't just blow it off and say, well, 124, see you later, and it's the same as it was. And as far as reopening the public hearing in the fall, we can put that as a condition, like the selectmen did for Cisco. Same exact situation, it's just a lot bigger at Cisco, where they knew that that date was coming. Didn't matter if there was no complaints or not, the date is coming, the residents can come back, the lettuce can come in, it's going to be an open public hearing. So, I'm, that's, I think that's a good compromise for this year, to get, this year is a test, to really try to count the people and get the cars off the bike path, manage the vehicles. You're right about what you said about people taking up two parking spaces. You didn't say it, but that's what you meant. All right? If you get somebody that can park people the right way, you'll gain two or three spaces as each changeover happens, trust me.
Yeah. And, you know, we're willing to, obviously, try to count people. I don't know how, how, well, I guess...
You can't get to 200.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, clearly. And that's, you know, that's not our intent at all. I mean, I think, you know, I think, obviously, the actual seats is a start. What, you know, what I don't want to do is be, you know, is have the owners...
Spending money.
Well, no, I just don't, no, I don't think, remind that. I mean, we want, you know, it should be accurate, and, you know, you should be, you shall be comfortable with what we're going to do, and the residents should be comfortable as well. I mean, that's the point of this. It's the point of counting it, right? I guess my, you know, my concern is, I don't want to hang the owners out to, I don't know, yardarm in September if, you know, if a guy went and his wife were waiting for a table, having a drink, and then, you know, sat down. I mean, so I guess the only way to, in my mind, the only way to accurately count it is to count the people sitting there, you know, eating all the time. Now, obviously, we don't want, you know, people hanging out drinking. That's not the purpose of Millie's. It wasn't the purpose of the Westender permit, shouldn't be the permit, the purpose of Millie's. But, you know, we're willing to help in any way we can, and to the extent there's a good solution to get an accurate count, I mean, that's, we're interested in the same thing, so...
When do they have to be off the tables outside? Is it nine?
I think, and I tested my memory, I think, I think it's eight, and they have to be, you cannot see, you cannot seat beyond eight, and, but by nine, everyone has to be, in other words, you could seat someone at 7:59, that person has to be done eating and moved inside by the time nine o'clock comes, so they can't seat anyone.
And the sun's not even down until quarter of nine?
Yeah, right, right, of course.
Okay. And how late does the bar open? How late does the inside open?
I'm sorry, Linda?
How late is the inside?
The inside, I mean, you know, I think it can be open on the license until one. I think the reality, and maybe I'll let David speak to that, you know, Chris Cochran, who's one of the managers, is out there a lot, said, you know, a lot of times, he leaves at 9:30, because there's not a lot of people there. So, I think the reality, I'd love to know, in reality, how late they generally stay open?
... After running placement pass for someone to get a, our bar, I'm sorry. Yeah, please save your... Sorry. Amen Banks, I'm the general manager of Millie's. Amen, Banks. Our license goes to 1:00. I think I can't remember maybe one time being out there at 1:00. Usually, as I shut down the restaurant, close everybody out, lock the doors, usually the latest I'm there is 11:00, 11:30, on a daily basis. So, I mean, if you've ever been in a restaurant, it's a really good time to get off before a girl.
Is it 11? Yeah. That's the only reason I ask, because if employees aren't allowed to park out, and they need to be able to get back out of Vatican conveniently.
Right. I mean, they'd have to take the van if it's beyond 11.
So, Mr. Brodet, just a few things at this point. The issue of having like a concierge, I don't think is a bad idea. I think you've heard three board members, myself inclusive now, to make that three board members, who think that's probably not a bad idea, just to get a handle on how people are flowing and how many seats you actually are using. And I dare say, none of us here are going to say that has, you know, you need a handle on it. And I think that that's where you need a body on it. It's not an exact science, but we're asking to come darn close to it, and I think that's where you need a little people management and someone to do to say that. I might, if your hours of operation are till one, and I do understand that, you know, it does close earlier out there, but you may want to leave your, I'd probably respectfully say, you want to leave your parking attendant on till 10:00, okay? Make it for the extra hour and just let's see what happens. Because I think we're a little unclear as to what kind of crowd is still drawing in at that hour.
Well, right. I mean, I think, you know, if the attendant is providing part of his function, I mean, we'll certainly find out by the end of the summer.
Exactly. I'd probably suggest our October meeting for coming back and revisiting this, because I know you're open through part of September. So, I think scheduling our October meeting would be a really good plan. The other thing you had talked about was kind of working with the DPW about encroachments in the area with other properties and stuff. I think that's some valuable data, both that the planning staff and the DPW could use. I'm not saying it necessarily needs to be brought to its next level of having to deal with an enforcement issue, but I think having the data available from the planning staff perspective, as well as from a DPW perspective, would be invaluable, because there are times I think we have to look at that from a number of different angles just on this board out there. So, I'm going to ask you, as one member of this board, to entertain doing that. I think you can work with planning staff to narrow the parameters down of where that should take place at, but I think the offer was thrown out there at this point, and I know we've dealt with this issue before indirectly, having that data would, I think, be a major help. a major help.
I agree. I think it'll only, in the long run, I think it'll probably only help us if, if what everyone's saying about where the fences are, where the landscaping is, you know, I think it would be worthwhile for everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else before the board? Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm still having a few concerns about this proposal of adding thirty-five seats. And I should've said first, good evening, Mr. Brodet.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, Mr. Owner and Sir, Mr. Manager, for the lack of me remembering your names, I'm terrible with names, as obviously put forth. I still, I, I have this sense that safety is the bottom line out there, and I have been out there on a number of occasions and just have having some problems wrapping my mind around going from eighty-nine to thirty, to adding thirty-five seats to one hundred and twenty-four. It, it's, it's, the bike path really concerns me for joggers, for strollers, for pedestrians, bike riders. I, I, I think, and I have this thing, this thought listening to the debate tonight, in my own mind, it would, it would be good to implement a parking attendant. I think that's a great idea. I echo my fellow board members on that. I think it's a good idea. And I think it's a good idea to do an off-site valet service down on South Cambridge Street. I think that's a good, that's a good start. I think it's, one of the reasons why I'm a little hesitant to support this is Maticet, it's, in Maticet, it's hard to find a lot of lots that are big enough for an off-site parking lot, being the residential neighborhood in West End Village that it is. You found eight to ten spots down there in South Cambridge Street, that's good. It's a good thing that you did that, you were, and you did work diligently to find that. I think that's great. But in summary, my personal feeling would be to say, this summer with eighty-nine seats, why don't you try adding an attendant? And why don't you try parking off-site with a valet down on South Cambridge Street? And see how that goes with eighty-nine seats? And see if it relieves some of the congestion, some of the complaints that have been coming in regarding operating the restaurant with that capacity? And if those two tweaks help, maybe we could go, it would give, buy you more time to find off-site lots for valet where you could increase your capacity for valet, which is a great idea. But I'm just a little hesitant from a safety standpoint to, to add thirty-five seats. I just wanna be honest about it and put that out there. But I really, in the spirit of problem solving, in the spirit of cooperation, and in the spirit of enhancing your business and, and everybody's enjoyment of Millies, which is well-known on the island, can we take another year to, to evaluate some of these ideas and put them forward for, for next season? And say, hey, you know, maybe we could come up with thirty spaces off-site and clear the bike path and, and the attendant could help people to find spots. And it, and it might work better in, in two thousand and fifteen, at one hundred and twenty-four then. So I kinda had, I had this gut feeling about staying with eighty-nine for two thousand and fourteen and implementing some of your good ideas and see how it goes. But that, that's just my personal feeling up here.
Sure.
Having listened to this for a couple of months-
Yeah.
And, and I really do appreciate, I want you to know, all of you, that I really appreciate working on some solutions. We're all trying to find solutions to this issue.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's a successful business and it's a, it's a wonderful business. People really enjoy it. So if we could just think about staying put for a year and then say, hey, let's implement some of these ideas this year with eighty-nine seats. And then in two thousand and fifteen, we might be able to go with enhanced ideas, concierge, parking lot attendant, off-site parking, valet. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I can appreciate that, that viewpoint, but, you know, just, just to, to respond and, and give you an idea of what we're thinking, you know, the, the procedures that we wanna put in place are related to having more seats there. At the eighty-nine seats that the restaurant is approved for, we don't need parking waivers. We have every parking space we need. If we add the thirty-five seats, then we need parking waivers of eight spaces, okay? Even with the two spaces we are planning to add as part of this application, keep that in mind as well, we're gonna add two, and then we, but we still need eight, a waiver of eight parking spaces. The purpose of the eight to ten spaces we were trying to find is, is just that, to, to try to counter the effect of that need for eight to ten spaces. And I think, you know, the, the potential valet, I mean, I frankly, I, I think that taking away the six spaces of the employees, giving them NRT passes and having a parking attendant, frankly, I, I think counteracts that in and of itself. I think we're certainly willing to go further, I mean, to get a hard count, have the concierge if that's necessary, if the board thinks in its wisdom that we, we need that. And, you know, we're certainly willing to, to do all those other things, work with the DPW, the NRTA to try to help safety on the bike path. But it's related to having those hundred and twenty-four seats and that's why we've, we've proposed it.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a pub, this is a public hearing at this point, so-
Yeah, and, and just one more thing to, Mr., I forgot to mention, Mr. Borchett's question is, is the fact is, you know, one of our concerns at eighty-nine seats, at, at a hard eighty-nine seats, is just that it'll exacerbate the problem even more. I mean, people are gonna come, like I said last time, people are coming to Millies. They're not gonna come to Millies, and if it's full, 'cause it has eighty-nine seats, they're not gonna drive out to sconce it to a different restaurant. I mean, they're gonna stay there. And I think, you know, they're, they're gonna be standing outside, waiting for a table. It's, you know, their, their cars are gonna be there longer. Millies is a very quick service, and so to the extent there's, you know, additional seats for those people to go to, they'll be in and out of there quicker, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So we don't wanna have a conversation about thirty-five seats bringing X number of extra cars. We don't, we've already had that conversation.
Well, well, we certainly have, I mean, I think, you know-
As opposed to car, as opposed to cars who are there waiting for a table who won't be turned over as much. I mean, thirty-five seats increase will bring X number of extra cars. My point being is safety, and the parking situation out there is difficult at the moment as of two thousand and thirteen season. The split rail fences right up to the pavement and so forth that we've discussed, all I'm saying is thirty-five seats more is gonna bring thirty-five more bodies out there. So it's speculative. At this point, I think it's speculative.
Well, on, on both ends, I mean-
We, we have to, we have to follow what we have to follow, but I guess my point, my main point is safety. And, and if you expand from eighty-nine to one hundred and twenty-four, I'm, I'm concerned about safety, I'm concerned about the split rail fences, I'm concerned about the bike path and, and so forth.
And, and we're concerned as well.
If, if you have thirty-five extra seats, you could potentially have thirty-five extra people waiting with their cars for a table. So it's just, it's, it's, it's an expansion. It's a, it's a big expansion. That's all I'm saying.
You know, I think the, the fact is, and, and I, I can appreciate that, right? And I, I think my, my point is that it's a popular restaurant, you know, whether, whether the number on the door says a hundred and fifty, eighty-nine, or one twenty-four, people are gonna come. It's a, it's a popular place. And so, you know, when, when they come, we want it to be as safe as possible, and we wanna regularize what's there. We wanna, you know, we, we wanna help correct the problem and have a hard one hundred and twenty-four seats and we're willing to count them or whatever we need to do. But whoever comes, we want it to be safe too.
Okay. So let me go back to where I was at this point. Thank you. Public hearing's now open at this point. I'll ask you to please raise your hand when you come to the microphone and identify yourself for the record. We've already heard some testimony before as well, so I'll ask you to kinda track on to new things at this stage. Leslie, please. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate all of the concessions that Rick has made.
For the record, Leslie-
Leslie Johnson.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Address.
Resident of Maticet.
Thank you.
I, I really appreciate all of the concessions that Rick has brought forward, and I think that they're very sensible, and I think it's something that it probably should have, those things should have been addressed long before, but we're here in the present time trying to see where do we go forward from here. I think it's really important for people to realize that the parking will always be an issue and there'll always be a safety problem, I would imagine, whether you have fifty, a hundred, two hundred and fifty, it's popular in Maticet Restaurant and Beach. But the biggest problem that I see is we already went to numbers of over two hundred, close to two fifty. Thirty picnic tables times four or six is a hundred and fifty people outside. No way were there forty people outside. So to add the thirty-five seats, I'm not, it is, yes, it is a big expansion, but I'm really, I feel apprehensive to say, why would you then add more seats to the outside? We have to first come into compliance with what has not happened in the last five years. It has particularly grown, yes, it's popular, and we all appreciate the restaurant, the food, the pricing, it's Maticet, but two hundred and fifty people going in and out of that restaurant, if you had eighty-nine and they'd stuck to the eighty-nine, there's still probably a turnover of three or four times. That's why the septic system failed. There were far more, they were so far out of compliance that I think I would have to agree with what Mr. Borchett says, and let's give all of these conditions a try and get through a summer of compliance with the eighty-nine people and have a successful restaurant that is safer, where there are conditions that make the restaurant flow better, the parking flow better. And if in fact that doesn't, the chaos is not there, well, then we could address it again for the next season. Also, I wanna add one more thing. When we first discussed five years ago, having picnic tables outside for a family-style dining and said, we're gonna go from inside seating and allow six or eight or ten picnic tables, whatever it was, to come up with forty seats, that meant forty-nine inside and forty outside. Well, it turned into a hundred and fifty outside. And I think that the biggest problem is the chaos and the noise of all the standing around and the drinking that happens, it's just inherent with a restaurant with people waiting. This back deck area is people standing and drinking. They don't go inside. It's gone beyond picnic tables and family dining. That part, yes, is wonderful, and that's what it's meant to be, but there is a stand-around drinking crowd, and that goes into later hours. And I think by adding more seats outside just invites more of that. If anything, if you're going to decide to expand the special permit, then I would urge you to have the added seats be inside seats and not outside seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giles?
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Giles, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ken Giles from Maticet, and I've been sitting back there itching to get up here. Let me give just a little, take a second, sorry. But I spent every summer of my life in Maticet. I used to walk up to Millies and spend hours sitting on her ice cream chest, talking to Millie, and that has affected me all my life, that she took a, everybody thought she was so tough. She was a pussycat. She was, she was great. And she took the simplistic approach to just about every problem, right or wrong, period. Okay, that's a little history. What I'm itching about is, what I see is the major problem out there is it's been too successful. There's too many people. That seems to be the whole thing. It's too big for Maticet, the way it is. It's not controlled. And that's what I keep hearing, we can't count, we can't count. Well, I take a simplistic approach. Why don't we have reservations only? We can count that way. We can keep track of it. We can say, we're gonna have a hundred and twenty-four, we're gonna have eighty-nine, we can sit, here you are, and if you don't have a reservation, you can take a chance if we've got extra space, but if you gotta wait, we're gonna keep, that's where you count maybe how many people are waiting. And if you say, people come in and you say you can't, you can't sit right now, tell them, go sit in your car, go down, look at the sunset, go sit in the car in the parking lot down at the, at the surf. But why not try to count that way? And then you can have your other people, we've talked about the concierge and stuff, but, but we can actually count that we're gonna have reservations for eighty-nine, one hundred and twenty-four, and that's it. And you're gonna have some people at the bar and some people waiting, but that's where you have to control it with these people outside, say you can't, you can't, waiter here basically is what you say, waiting. You'll have to, if you, your reservations for an hour from now, you can't wait at the bar. And that's just a simple approach possibly, and a good way to count. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have, we continue to be opposed as an organization, the Maticet Residents Association, to this, although we very much like Millies and want Millies to succeed, but think that the business interests of the applicant have to be reconciled with the needs of the residents in the area. And on that point, I had a telephone discussion with Mr. Bo Blair, one of the owners, and it's, he, he had reached out to myself and other neighbors, is what he had said, and had a number of conversations with abutters. And the way we left our conversation was that, I said that if, if I heard from our members who were opposed to that, and that is the reason why our organization opposed it, then, and, and if I heard from them and they said that they, they changed their mind and they were happy with the, with the revisions to the, to the application for which I applaud the applicants, then I would poll our board and see if we would change our position to one of, of, of support or no position. I did not hear from any of the neighbors, so I have to assume that they're still opposed to it. The second thing that I wanted to mention was the reference to the off-site parking on South Cambridge. And if the location is one that we discussed at several public hearings in two thousand and eight, that is the site of the former Tristram's property, we were opposed to the construction of the Island Racket Club in large measure because of the increase in, in traffic in this quiet residential neighborhood. And to, we, you know, we, we would not want to see that prospect revisited with car doors slamming and headlights shining on the back of people's houses up until eleven or eleven thirty at night. And, and another point on that, the board members will recall that in two thousand and twelve, you approved a, a four-lot subdivision for that property. My understanding is that two of those four lots are under contract. So if the, part of, part of the resolution to the parking issue is using that property as an off-site parking lot, if those two lots are closed upon, then I don't know what happens to the plans to, to park cars there.
Go ahead, I'll give you a second to respond.
Yeah, just, just for a second, I just wanna address that, that comment. The, the four-lot subdivision was on five South Cambridge, this is for seven South Cambridge, and, and that's also part of the reason why it's a temporary solution is that, you know, I think the owner wants to sell that lot eventually, but it isn't related to the subdivision.
Thanks.
Martin Burke, Six Arkansas. Correct me if I'm wrong, but seven South Cambridge is zoned R2, according to the Nantucket GIS.
Mr. Brodet? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I just want you to respond.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. I'm at my apologies.
Could you please repeat?
According to the Nantucket GIS, seven South Cambridge is zoned as R2.
Yep. I- Yep, I believe so, yes.
So R2 cannot be used as commercial?
And that particular property has a pre-existing special permit that is still active on the property.
Okay. Furthermore, what plan do you have to operate the parking area at Seven South Cambridge for safety concerns? Because during the summer in Nantucket, particularly in Matticat, a lot of the grandchildren of our neighbors show up and they beep up through the properties. There's no lighting there, per se. There's a dirt road, kids are on their bikes at all hours. What safety concerns do we have on our road?
I think what we, what we would propose is to have it be run by a professional service. I mean, you know, we wouldn't want, you know, a kid sitting at Millie's that is fresh out of high school. We'd want a service to run it, we'd want to make sure it's insured, make sure there's precautions in place so that, you know, only a certain number of cars are parked there, and we'd want to make sure that they're only parked in a certain area on the lot. Obviously, we don't, the restaurant doesn't want to create any unsafe situations for themselves or the Matticat residents.
If Seven South Cambridge comes into play, will our neighbors have comments?
I think it would, they would have to, yes, absolutely.
So we're going to receive notification for...
I think, may I?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Sorry. I think what we would propose is to hopefully not have it be a condition of the special permit, so that we can properly file for that as well, because we think it's a great idea as well. In other words, you know, we would want to, want to come back for that particular property, give notice to all the neighbors and, you know, make sure they have a chance to voice their concerns about the eight spots.
So will this be done before the coming season?
We would certainly apply immediately, yeah. If, you know, if, you know, if the board thinks that it's something they would want us to do, again, not necessarily as part of the permit, but something that they think is a good idea, then we would want to do it and we would want to apply immediately so that we could try to help immediately this summer, help the situation this summer.
I don't see you helping where we live in our community.
Anyways, Mr. Lowell, did you have something?
I was actually trying to help the speaker there with a question that I have that might help some of this. Rick, eight, I'm reading with the Seven Cambridge proposal, South Cambridge proposal. The eight to 10 cars, including employees, or in addition to the employee cars, because I thought that we were going to put the employee cars over there, so you wouldn't see anybody slamming doors more than one time.
Well, that's, you know, that's, you know, we could do that as well. I mean, obviously, we want to...
Not the same as a valet.
Right, no, and I think, you know, it would be, if, for instance, if the board thought in their wisdom it was more important to park employee cars there, then, you know, for a 12-hour shift or a six-hour shift or whatever, there would be a car parked there, and there would be less, less traffic.
There'd be just the vehicles parked one time, and that's it, like if somebody's dinner party at a private home.
Sure, sure. I mean, we just, you know, we want, we want to make sure we're trying to address all, you know, all the concerns as well.
That's two separate things, and it would certainly be more, you know, acceptable to the neighbors if the vehicles were there and it wasn't a continuous flow of vehicles.
That would be the expectation, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
I'm the other half to the Martin Burke. I live at Six Arkansas Avenue. And although I...
Your name for the record?
Deneen Burke.
Thank you, ma'am.
Although I can appreciate the board and Nate's comments and what everybody's tried to work out here, Seven South Cambridge at the moment is an open area, which is near a pond. Whether it's a one-time parking in the morning and then a one-time leave in the evening, sounds echo out there. And also, what has to happen is, even though you say eight to 10 parking spaces, what will happen is if they can't park on the back path, or they can't find parking elsewhere, they will soon learn that, oh, there's a few cars here. So we'll park there, and then we'll walk down to the corner and take the bus to the next bus stop, which happens to be in front of Millie's. We already experienced this, because they park right on the corner of South Cambridge and Arkansas. And when they can't park there, they park in front of our house. The property at last, after two years of going through with the Island Racket Club endless meetings, was zoned to be a subdivision. And we went through all the mitigating factors about noise out there, the whole nine yards. And now you're coming back and addressing an issue that it's only eight cars. But if you had a continual barragement seven days a week, even if it's only eight cars, and it's only twice a day, it still is a disruption to a residential area. And it's mitigated with the noise with the pond. It's an open area. Now, if I might suggest, what other people have done is utilize already public facilities. You have a shuttle van, why not use the elementary school parking lot? Why not use the parking lot here at the police station? Why not use the parking lot of areas that are already commercially used and run them back and forth from there? I realize it's a convenience to the neighborhood and Millie's to be very close, but it still is a disruption, just so happens that our back deck, 92 feet of it, abuts that property. And we're going to hear closing doors, back and forth, people coming into their cars, the conversations back and forth. "Oh, we had a great time, dah 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 dah." Well, we can't find parking there, so we'll just come back down here and park again. And it's also a safety issue, because Arkansas Avenue is a private road, and there are kids that ride their bicycle up and down this road, and this is the same reason we fought Island Racket Club for two years. It's a residential area, that portion of it. It used to be, years ago, a part of Tristram's Landing, that they offered tennis as a part of their property management. And we fought this, for two years we fought this. And we are trying to say to you guys again, we're readdressing these same issues. I like Millie's, I agree with some of the comments that have been made, I disagree with that particular place as being off-site parking. I think there can be other places that can be utilized. They do have a shuttle van that they're running people back and forth to town. Why not use the elementary school and make that a pickup location? Why does it have to be directly behind my house? And we have dogs, we sit out on the deck, and when you have people walking around and they're talking and the doors are slamming, the dogs are constantly barking at them because they all know who they are. And this is what I've got to live with, all because that piece of property happens to be vacated at the moment. But at last, we settled with the previous owners, it was a five-house subdivision that we agreed upon. And now you want to change it again just because it hasn't moved forward with the present owner. And I think, I think the board needs to really take a hard look at this. At any rate, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Rhoda? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Rhoda Wyman for several of the abutters to Millie's. And I will try hard not to be redundant, I just want to remind you that this is the 10th time that they've been back here. My clients appreciate, they've had 10 modifications to the original special permit. My clients appreciate the changes that have been made, and we realize that some of them are very helpful. The parking lot attendant suggestion is one that we appreciate it, but what we'd like to say is, we would like an off-duty police officer as opposed to a parking lot attendant. This is something that had been imposed several years ago, the Summer House, it was a restriction that I actually had placed on their license. And as you mentioned earlier, they don't have an MCD or a special permit, so it had to go before the Board of Selectment, but we found it very helpful to have an off-duty police officer there. I think that if for nothing else, the effect of having someone there in uniform would make somebody think twice about parking illegally. So I think that that's something that they really should consider. I think the whole concept of a parking lot attendant makes sense, but I think it should be a police officer. The huge problem, and I think Mr. Lowell mentioned it, and I think that that is one of the main problems, is the number of people that come in. And what I'd like to suggest is that there be somebody at the door, and they have a clicker, like they use at town meeting, and as the people walk in, they count the number of people, so that at any given time, they don't exceed the number of people that they're supposed to have in there. And anything short of that, I just don't see working. I think that that's a control mechanism that really needs to be in place. And if there's somebody that's responsible standing at the door and counting those with an actual device, I think that could work, and I think that's really important. The other thing I would suggest is that whomever the manager is on duty at the time should have a cell phone, and that cell phone number should be available to the abutters. Again, that's something else that we did at the Summer House, and it works. If there is a lot of noise going on, if there's parking all over the place, and the neighbors are concerned about it and upset about it, they should be able to go to the phone and dial that cell phone number and get a live person that's going to answer the phone that's responsible and correct the problem. It's something that has been going on for so long, and I really respect what Mr. Borchardt said, I think that having the zoning enforcement officer out there last year and citing them for 260 seats is something that the board shouldn't take lightly. I think it gives the community, in general, a wrong message if this board goes ahead after that happened just a year ago and gives them additional seats. I think that we should wait, see what happens this year, see if they can be good neighbors, if they can respect the abutters, and let's give it a year and let them come back next year and ask for the additional seating. I think that that's really the best suggestion, and that's something that the board should really consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, everybody's assuming a lot in here. If they don't get any more seats and they stay at what they currently have at 89, they don't have to do one single thing on this list. So I don't want anybody coming out of here with any misunderstanding that they're going to have off-site parking, that they're going to have a parking attendant, that they're going to be forced to have any of these conditions that we have just talked about. They don't. If they do not receive some modification from this board, we cannot force any more conditions on them than what's already in that decision. I think personally, imposing all of these conditions, which are more than I've, even all the years I was on the ZBA, the 25 years I was there, are more conditions on this type of a business than I've ever seen. And there've been a lot on this particular property over the, over the years, from the very beginning back in the early, in the probably mid-'70s, the first time it came in. So 124 is better than the 260, because now they're under restriction, now they know what is expected of them, they have all of these conditions to see if this works this summer. And I think coming back in October to see if these conditions work, if we need to add some or modify the number of seats, makes the most sense at the moment. Because otherwise, they don't have to do anything that we've just talked about this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to go to new people first, please.
I'm Maureen Phillips, Matticat resident. I want to respond first to Ms. Williams' last comment. I think what we're talking about here is that with respect to the people at Millie's, and we love having the restaurant there, and the food's great and all of that, and I would not want it not to be there at all, but they had, they have restrictions that now exist and which were, you know, not adhered to. I mean, they were not adhered to in an extreme fashion, where they had to be cited by having essentially double the number of people that they were permitted for. So the fact that, that I think Ms. Williams seems to be saying that unless we give them an uptick, we don't have any control over the situation, or we won't get any of these things that would help the parking chaos and the safety issues and all of that, I think that's quite spurious, and I think that they would have to, they have to run a safe establishment. They have to, that all has to be done, and what they actually do to do it is certainly up to the people at Millie's, but they don't have, and I don't think they think they have free rein to get to the situation that they got to last summer where, you know, there were 260 people there. So I think that, I just think that is frankly bas hackwork. And I would also just like to point out the fact that since getting to the off-site parking, that is something that is quite complicated, has lots of safety considerations. I know Mr. Bodett mentioned that if they were going to do this, they would hire an outside firm to handle it and all of that, but that's a highly complicated and way to potentially alleviate some of this parking issue. And I would also wonder whether, quite frankly, if the last permitted use for that land is a four-unit subdivision, a four-lot subdivision, how it could be converted into a commercial parking lot. I just wonder how that can be, since it is zoned residential and that major commercial development. The restrictions, requirements for that development permit were not followed through by the developers at that time, and those were conditions of that permit, things like, you know, having various tests done and what have you. It's, so I would think that that permit is possibly no longer valid, and that at best what is valid would be the residential subdivision. And putting a parking lot in a residential subdivision, which is literally surrounded by nothing but residences and is off a dirt road where there is no lighting, et cetera, et cetera, seems to me to be a poor way of addressing the problem of Millie's success. So those are the comments I wanted to make, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bodett? I think he's got to respond.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it.
Briefly, sir.
Sure. Just with respect to that, I mean, you know, the complications of it, obviously, are part of the reasons why we're asking it to not be a condition of a special permit. I mean, we're certainly happy to do it if you think it's a good idea, and we'll come in, and obviously, that existing commercial permit would have to be amended. That's the point of us having to come in for that permit so that the neighbors get notice and it's amended. It is valid, it's under the Permit Extension Act, and so is the residential subdivision. The residential subdivision is for a different lot. The residential subdivision is for a different lot.
Thank you for addressing that. Anyone else on the audience wishing to comment on this? I want to go to new people first before I... Leslie, you had your... Sir, I'm going to, Leslie, thank you, just one second, I'm sorry.
John Shovell, 312 Maticket Road.
You guys ready to microphone?
Yes, thank you.
Shovell's the name, 312 Maticket Road, John. I spoke at the last meeting in April, and I pointed out to the Commission that the owners had the obligation to satisfy the limitations of their permit. And all of you here and all the people in the audience know that for a number of years they have ignored that, to the extent that 260 people were there when a state and town inspector went out. Now, they're violating their permit, but yet they're coming in here and say, "Raise the number." Is it any guarantee that they're not going to violate that number? They should demonstrate their good intentions by limiting the seating to 89 people for this summer. Don't give them the opportunity to bring more cars to Maticket. And I would say, anybody of you want to have a house in Maticket in July and August? I don't think so.
Not too close to the water.
Not too, it's too close to the water, yeah. Thank you.
Leslie, briefly.
Whoa.
You okay?
Well, it's like a piano file here. Excuse me, thank you. Sorry, Rick. Let's say you did go to 124, and you say you come back in October. Once something is ever granted forward, you never go back. You wouldn't then go back to 89 if there were violations. So it would seem to me it would make more sense to show compliance to 89 before granting the 124.
Let me, I'm going to speak as the Chair. Let me correct that.
Thank you.
We can go back to that.
Oh, you can?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, we can go back.
Does it, is it a concern to you that the vi...
We could, we could, I, just let me finish.
Sure.
We could actually, if we, if there was enough supporting data, we could scale it back further. It would have to be a public hearing under which to do it, though.
Well, then this might seem...
So there's, there's, let's not get locked into only one potential scenario here.
Right.
This is why it moves to a special permit process. So just because we say today 124, maybe something, doesn't mean that when we come back to October, and for eight, 10 good reasons, one good reason, it just all fell apart. It's like, wait a minute. Let's, let's, let's really analyze the situation and understand exactly where we're at.
Thank you. Well, then let me throw out this caveat. If that being the case, and knowing the violations for the 89, why wouldn't you say, "All right, let's go back to 60"?
That's not what's before us right now. That's, I'm just going to say, that's not what's before us.
Is there anyone else on the audience who'd like to speak on this? Board members? What would you like to do?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Motion is to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second? Oh, by the way, Mr. Markinter, if we're going to start proceeding in that direction, I'm going to ask you to sit down on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That motion is made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously. Pleasure of the Board.
I will make a motion to grant 124 seats, conditioned on the no-bar exterior. The vents have been eliminated, no expansion of the deck. It be capped at 124 seats. I believe that's eight picnic tables in front and five in the back. 55 outside. Andrew, I think is already in the permit, right? So the rest would be inside, Rick?
We proposed 55.
Okay, and that leaves 80-something outside? 79?
I think if, if 55 is full outside, we'd have... You're never lying immediately to math, are you? I think it's 69.
Okay, yep. Yep. No employee parking on site. NRTA passes to the employees. You will have a parking attendant that will be on-site from 5:00 to 10:00, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ensure that there's no parking on the bike path, and to check over the summer where the people are coming from and where they're parking, if they're not parking on-site. Back for a public hearing at the October meeting to revisit the issues. Come up with a plan through staff, Andrew, of how to count heads, how to ensure the occupancy. Is that something that we worked out between you and Rick and the owners?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something that we're willing to do, if Andrew thinks that we can work out a solution with staff.
This is contingent upon another Board's action, but I think somewhere in the decision it should reference that there'll be all attempts made to move the NRTA stop from in-between the two driveways to ensure, they can do it this year, they haven't started running, to ensure the safety.
The survey, or the...
Survey of the Washington area, your situation.
Say what? They're going to deal with that outside of this.
I, no, that's going to be part...
What is that condition exactly?
I'd like to pick up on the condition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There is, there is a new encroachment policy floating around the DPW that'll help you with that, if it ever makes it to the selectmen.
All right, let me finish my motion. To make all efforts to remove, to remove the fencing from the town right-of-way, is that where we are? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
To have the town move?
Remove the fencing from the town right-of-way. The fencing is not allowed to be there if it's in the right-of-way. All the other conditions that are in the previous approvals are, as to ours and whatnot, are still in force? I think that's it, unless somebody else has friendly amendment. Shuttle, I got that shuttle pass, it's already read.
The concierge?
Oh, yeah, that's whoever, however they're going to arrange to have somebody counting heads and ensuring that there's 124 people and no more. Whether that's another person, whether that's the manager, or whether there's a person actually taking a head count, I think that detail, that particular detail needs to be worked out between you guys, as to how that happens, whether it's a clicker or something else.
Sure. Absolutely. The only, if I may, the only thing that was part of the request that you didn't mention, I think, is the seating outside in the area behind.
I mentioned that.
The restaurant, okay, sorry.
Eight tables in front, five in the back.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's what you proffered. Anything else, Andrew, you can think of?
There was a request for the curb cut, is that right? For an additional curb cut.
An additional curb, yeah, that was part of the original application. To add those two spaces and to help the traffic flow on the easterly parking lot.
Yep. Is that part of this? That's part of this, okay. That's part of my motion. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to throw one more thing in, if you don't mind. I thought Rhoda had a really good thought about the manager on duty, how he had a dedicated cellphone.
Not his, because I'm worried about them infringing on his rights if he's not on.
No, 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 no.
We'll get a cellphone.
Yes.
To be left at the...
That has nothing to do with his personal life.
Right.
Correct.
I'll add that, a cellphone, a dedicated cellphone, that the number will be given to all of the neighbors. Use it...
Who asked for it, I guess, you know?
Yeah.
If anyone wants it.
Who asked for it? Be posted, let's have it posted there.
Answer my phone.
Okay, is that it?
I think...
That's my motion. Andrew, I have them all written down to the principal.
All right. The motion's made and seconded for discussion. Are you all clear on the motion at this point? I just want to make sure. Mr. McGlaughlin, are you clear on the motion, sir?
I understand.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The record reflect us a 4-1 vote, Mr. McGlaughlin opposed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Board members, do you need a break for a few moments? We have been here just about two and a half hours. Do you want to sit tight for a few more minutes? All right, thank you. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll give him a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to ask you to take your conversations outside, because we have other public hearings that we need to address at this point. Okay. Next thing before us at this point is 1014, which is the Nantucket Theater Institute on 5 North Water Street. Mr. Cullen, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, good evening to you. I do want to say that we submitted a package on Friday to the Board that inadvertently did not include some massing, and I could provide, they just showed some sort of shadow boxes of what the buildings would look like, if it's okay for me to provide those?
Please.
We don't have that. The last two pages, five, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Only five? I hope more than that. Two, three, four, I know, I know. Came a little shy, we need for the ultimates, too.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay.
We'll get you back.
I'll get mine through the Board the next time. Just passing down this one.
Thank you, Paul.
No, this is different.
So the only thing that's different is the two last pages that show sort of just a concept of mass, of what the massing might be. But the, no other information has changed.
Okay.
Okay, so essentially what we're talking about here, I think you're probably all familiar with the property, it used to be Demby Real Estate, and there's a historic, you know, 1800s house on the property, and a small cottage that's from, I think, the 1960s that would disappear. The building that we're talking about here would go on what's now the parking lot, and the historic structure that would be preserved essentially as is. What we're talking about doing is what the Nantucket Theater Institute would like to do, and just so you know what they are, they're a nonprofit that would be a professional theater, arts, and education company. Does the Board need a minute, or?
No, I think we're fine. Go ahead.
And the theater that they're proposing would be about 140 seats, 150 seats, with handicap access, and should provide essentially no negative impact on the neighborhood. We're talking about maintaining the green space at the corner between Whaler's Lane and North B Street that I think would be both good for public viewing and sightlines for traffic, and also could create a nice pocket park-type area for the neighborhood. The sound would be entirely mitigated, the light would be mitigated, there would be parking passes for the employees, there would be employee housing for the summer, there would be, you know, dedicated trash pickup, there would be concessions only for the theater, for inside the theater during that time of productions. There would be, we propose to do improvements of the sidewalk on either side of that corner, to the extent that necessary. There would be a use of electronic ticketing to reduce milling about. There would also be a lobby inside that would be available for people, as well as the green space area, so that we're not creating any blockage of the sidewalk. We were fairly successful with that last year during the tent, and we hope to have it the same this year. We had almost no traffic issues last year, essentially because the most popular way of getting there was using the valet service. The stuff on Broad Street, right next to the town building, was where almost all of the patrons were parking and coming to the show. We had a lot of really good feedback when we would put information about that on the website and on the ticketing and suggest it. The valet guys were very, very thankful to have that going on there. The design of the building would be about 3,200 square feet roughly, where you have to go to the HDC. It would be, you know, tall for what's there, but we think it would be fitting with, if you look at the neighborhood, there's the Whaler Museum and lots of other tall buildings, and this building, I think, would fit in. The design that we're talking about is essentially trying to, trying to go back to Nantucket's agrarian roots and have, using an old barn, a very simple design, something with very simple lines that would be appropriate for the area, as if it had been, you know, moved over like the old Dreamland. And I don't know if there's any questions or concerns or issues that I could address for you?
Let me check in with my board and see where we're at this point. So, Board members, any discussion?
Oh, you know, actually, I'm sorry, I do have just a couple of clarifications. The plans that you have show the lot as divided into two lots, and that's because it's an oversized lot for the neighborhood based on zoning, but it's one lot and there's no intent to divide it. So I don't, I don't want to provide any confusion that even in, although the concept plan shows it as two lots, in reality, it's one legal lot, and there's no subdivision planned at this time or in the near future. But it was just laid out that way for contemplation purposes. And the one problem that we had when the architect did that was that the architect calculated the ground cover based on one, on only half the space. So although the information I provided to you said that we would be at 70% ground cover, we'd actually be at closer to 56% ground cover, which means that we would have, you know, 44% open space instead of, you know, 70, 30. So, you know, that correction, I hope, is beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Did you have some?
That's one big building with a 3,200-square-foot ground cover and 45 feet tall. I think you're going to run into a hard time at the other Board with those dimensions. I don't know, we talked about this earlier, maybe Michael can talk about it, how many complaints were made because of the tent?
I think we had zero.
Okay.
Zero, yeah.
And I think the improved sidewalk, if needed, we're just talking concept here, right? I think improved sidewalk, if needed, it's needed. I think you should take the word "if needed" out. It's not wide enough for handicap access on either side, coming up Whaler or going down North Water Street. So I think you'd be paying to have the sidewalk widened or fixed, which may push back the fences slightly if you want handicap accessibility. And you've got to make sure that you have the curb cuts from one sidewalk to the next.
Right.
If necessary. I know we just talked about it with 17 Broad, a contribution to the transportation issue. I know we're dealing with a 501(c)(3), so I don't know how well that's going to work out, but we just talked about it with the other guys contributing to that fund.
Yeah.
That's not on here.
Yeah, can I address that point? I think that, although, you know, one difference, of course, is that my client is a nonprofit. But what we'd suggest is instead of providing money, that we could provide other benefits that the Planning Board might think are maybe, maybe better than a cash contribution. So for example, the preservation of that open space and the, and opening that up to the public, if the land bank were doing a pocket park like that, it would cost millions of dollars. And then the other thing that my client is willing to offer is to have the bathrooms open to the public during working hours. And I think that's a big benefit that, you know, most people only do when they have a Chapter 91 license, and they have to do it anyway. So I hope that you would consider those as perhaps, you know, much better than $10,000 or something. You know, and we can discuss others, but those are some ideas that I think my client would be willing to discuss, that the Planning Board would normally be interested in.
What do you envision? Do you envision this being a year-round?
Yes.
Because right now, it's based upon the tent existence.
That's right.
Okay. When do you foresee actually breaking ground? You want to build this over this winter?
Yeah.
Because you know you're not getting the tent again.
That's right, that's right. The plan would be to try and get the MCD approved in, you know, maybe one or two more meetings. I don't know that there's a ton of more work, but, you know, it sort of depends on where you decide you want to go, when the Board decides you want to go this meeting with this issue. We could spend the summer getting, we have to go to the Concom because it's in the flood zone, but that's sort of, you know, not really a big, it's probably only one... but that's sort of, you know, not really a big, it's probably only one meeting at the Concom. And then at the HDC, you know, it could be two, three, five, 15 meetings, I don't know. And, oh, Linda, just smile. I would anticipate having permits in place by the end of the summer and breaking ground in the fall.
Do you envision the floodplain, which is like, what, eight and a half, nine feet there? Do you envision that impacting the first floor above grade?
Yes, and Paul could speak to this more, but my understanding is that we're at about six to eight feet of elevation, and we have to be at about nine and a half feet, I think, for the floodplain. So it's not as bad as it could be in other places. You could see, you know, much bigger differentials. The engineering on this is going to be an issue in terms of dealing with the water and dealing with the height, which is one of the things-
And the handicap accessibility, because that lifts it right up out of the ground.
That's right. And we would want to make sure that we're doing that in a way that is aesthetically appropriate and historically appropriate.
I know there was serious neighborhood opposition, especially to the tent, because it was, you could hear the noise, trash, there's all kinds of little issues going on.
Yeah.
Have you reached out to the neighborhood, which is largely residential and largely B&amp;Bs that rely on peace and quiet on North Water Street? Have you reached out to them with this particular plan? I know we heard from them on the tent issue, but I think you need to go, they're all open now, they're opening as we speak. They'll all be open by Memorial Day, and I think maybe you ought to talk to Sarah O'Reilly, people across the street, which we have a letter from already, the Brass Lantern, all of those guys over there, and have that in-depth conversation with them.
Yeah, I know that Michael Caffey has had several conversations with them, and I think we would definitely engage more with them. Our main goal tonight is to get essentially a thumbs up on the direction that we're going, with the idea that if the board is comfortable with a concept plan, then we would engage in dealing with the neighbors on that and dealing with the architecture and the engineering involved. What we don't want to do is spend tons of time and money putting together a big plan that no one likes. What we'd rather do is, you know, get the input upfront and then go and build a design, or, you know, build the design from the input. That said, we have had a lot of concerns by the, from the neighbors, but not a lot of complaints from the neighbors. They were concerned with trash, they were concerned with traffic, they were concerned with noise, they were concerned with lighting, all entirely legitimate concerns. And what we've seen is that it was essentially a non-issue. We did have one concern that, one complaint that during some practice or some cleanup, there was a radio playing, and, you know, pretty minor kind of things. But I think what's important to keep in mind with this kind of a theater is that the theater wants to block the outside noise from causing any disturbances, and that sound insulation works both ways. It should be, it will be designed in a way that, in order to mitigate, in order to create the environment that they need, that's dark and soundproof, that the benefit goes both ways. They don't need a lot of outside lighting, just a little safety lighting and those kind of things. They're not, you know, a bunch of open windows with music blasting, you know, there's no restaurant, there's no, there's no activity that engages in a, that creates a nuisance. The concessions would all be inside, there's no takeout. I think that the tent is a concern because A, it was an unknown, and B, it's less, you know, physically able to trap the nuisance issues. But I think here, you're going to see them all within the walls.
And the doors closed when?
The doors closed.
I assume it's going to be air-conditioned.
It'll be air-conditioned, yeah. So, you know, it'll be about as tight as you can get, and they need it to be, to create the environment that they need to do professional theater. You know, the abutters here, we're talking about on one side is the employee housing for the yacht club, you know, and they deserve to be treated just like anybody else. And then you've got commercial buildings all across the street. There's the Orr &amp; Moore Building, there's the Vondale Offices, there's the Whaling Museum. You've got commercial across the street at Foreign Earth Water, like where Patricia Hofstadt's office is, and it's some kind of financial office in there. And then you've got some rooming houses. And, you know, when the rooming house is the applicant, everybody talks about how noisy and terrible they're going to be, but they're fine, you know, they're all going to be fine. I think that this use will fit in the area, and we're really, and frankly, there's three more hotels that are going to be built right next door. We've got the one, you know, two that you've just approved, one that's in construction now and one that you've just approved. This is going to be, I think, a vibrant area.
Your size is, are you asking just for 99 to start? Because that's the same size as the Starlight, remember how small that space actually is? And then you're going to come back eventually for 150, or are you asking for 150 right off the bat?
I think we'd probably want to get the permit approved at the max, with the idea that we might not use every seat at first. I don't know that there's a substantial difference. You know, it's not like there are seats at a restaurant where it might make more of a difference.
So this isn't the final thing at all, this is just a shot across the bow, and then you will work through these issues with everybody between now and the next one and the next one?
Right, this is a concept plan, and we're hoping to get a positive response so that we can, you know, the next step would be essentially to go to the HDC, where we expect to get a lot more feedback on the size and shape and height and all that. And those HDC concerns are going to significantly influence, or could significantly influence, a lot of the design inside. So we would expect to come, you know, come back here when there's more specific changes to be made. But I also think that a lot of the conditions that you would normally impose can be imposed almost no matter what the building is, you know, in terms of the aesthetics of the outside of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any comment?
I have one comment. Your proposal, 45 feet, and I think that our general laws around this island are usually 30 feet, and you have to go to the Board of Appeals for an exception from it. I don't think there's a reason to put a building there that's 45 feet high, amongst the one that's in the yacht, one next to it, and the two across the street. They're all down around 28. I think you ought to try to get it under 30 feet. I know you have an elevator shaft, but that can still work out in the first two floors, and I think you should try to get it close, 30 feet or less.
Yeah. John, I think when we go to the HDC, we expect to get more feedback on containing the size, but I appreciate your comment.
Speaking of the prop point, Pete.
Yeah.
30 feet or less. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, this is in, Andrew, has this not now been put into the CDT?
It is.
Which allows for a height, I've said it multiple times, over 30 feet. What can they go up to, Andrew, without a special permit? Isn't it 35?
Anything over 30 requires a special permit.
Okay, but you can go up, we've been seeing that the Whaling Museum is higher, the one we just approved earlier is higher, the one at the street is higher. The Dreamland is higher, so, and the town building is higher, and the Mooney Building, as addition, is higher. So I think we've gone down that road already for a reason, because if all of town burnt down, you couldn't build it again unless you allowed them to go over 30 feet. So 30 feet is the maximum allowed everywhere else, but in the CDT, which ends just beyond this, doesn't it?
Correct, yeah.
So we do have the ability to grant a special permit to go over 30 feet, and we've done so.
I think with the concern that we looked at internally with the height was, you know, what can we, you know, it's programmatically what works, but also what impact are we having on the neighbors with the height? And what we didn't want to do is design it in a way that you're, you know, like overshadowing everybody and blocking light and air and those kind of things. And even though this is a tall building, it still creates a lot of open space that we think mitigates the impact. But again, we expect to get significant feedback from the HDC on the design. And, you know, it's not, it's not set in stone how tall it will be.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Just one question for you. The one side where you're doing a zero lot line, so if you are choosing that option, does that have to be a masonry wall? I know that you can't have windows with it at that setback.
Paul is telling me, yes. Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know that we would necessarily do a zero lot line at the end of the day, because then you have repair, you know, maintenance issues. It's a quick sketch from the architect. At the end of the day, more likely you would have two or three feet all the way around.
Mr. Portman?
But we also don't need windows.
Right, of course.
Do you have, Mr. Cohen, do you have any plans for vehicular access to the back of the stage? I'm seeing a lane next to the northern lot line on the existing building. If you needed to access for prop materials or stage construction materials, how are you planning on getting to the back door of the stage from North Water Street?
Yeah, Michael could probably address that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Portman. Hi, Carl. The nature of the type of theater that we do generally doesn't require big sets and big pieces to be moved in and out of the building. We will probably be building most of this stuff onsite on the actual stage. We do have some shop space next door, but it would be smaller elements that would be coming in from next door. There wouldn't be deliveries of large pieces of anything going to backstage.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback that, I think that aisle you're talking about would probably be where the trash would go, bike racks, air conditioning units, those kind of things, where we'd want to be able to mitigate the impact of having them in the public view.
Anyone else on the board? So, just one thing I have for you, and I'm sorry, I may have not heard this. You were planning on doing improvements to Whaler Street and some of the surrounding sidewalks?
To the sidewalks, both sides.
Good, because, yeah, it just desperately needs it at this point, a little bit of widening and another in pretty bad shape.
No, that's, of course, you know, the property line here is at the fence, the sidewalk is town land, so we'd have to coordinate that with the DPW.
Yeah, that's fine. Good. We're not even there yet, so we haven't even opened it, so we'll let that out of order. With, yeah, from the board perspective first.
Steve, I like this idea about, instead of cash, this is good, because it doesn't come up, something like this doesn't happen that often where you want to have a park and private property just because, you know what I mean? This is good, especially down there. Have you shown this to anyone down there, any abutters?
To the, we haven't, it's not, the ink is barely dry, so this plan has not been shown around. And frankly, we wanted to, if people came tonight, that'd be one thing, but we wanted to get feedback from you, because we don't want to keep going to the abutters with, we're going to do this, and then we change it. But I think if we get a thumbs up tonight that this concept plan works, or whatever comments you have that we make changes to it, we would intently go to the Concom and the HDC and the abutters and try to get, incorporate those comments. The last thing we want to do is design something that has things that could have been avoided if we had talked to people.
The public bathroom thing is unbelievable. I mean, that's, we haven't had enough bathrooms in town for forever.
No, so I think that the, you know, if that was a pocket park from the land bank, it'd be worth millions of dollars.
That's right, no, that's true. Thank you.
So, Mr. Cohen, one thing, you keep going back and saying this is a concept plan. So are we, are you just looking to close this with feedback? Or are you going to keep this on the table for a few months as your original application? Wait for some more input from, like, other boards and then kind of work with, use this as the working document?
Well, I think that if, unless there's objection from the board, what we'd like to do, I don't want to close tonight, but what we'd like to do is probably get input from staff as to what kind of details on engineering or drainage or anything that the staff thinks would be appropriate to add, and we would come back with those. But I don't need necessarily the board to give me a list. I think Andrew's the best person to get that list from, although we can answer any concern of the board. And then we would come back with those details concurrent to applying to the HDC. But I don't know that the commission, that the planning board necessarily has to wait for the HDC.
Right, no, I understand, but I just wanted to be real clear about what you were expecting to kind of transact in the short term of things.
It's a real application. But he also needs an extension, because you're up before we meet again.
That's fine, we can do an extension.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're getting mixed up with like a sketch plan versus a real thing.
That's why I was asking for the special application.
This is a real, it's just not this.
That's right, it's a real application, but we're treating it somewhat like a preliminary plan review, because I think it'll be more effective to do it that way.
Board members, anything else? Andrew? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this, I'd ask you to please come forward and identify yourself for the record. Mr. Cohen, when would you like to continue to?
The following planning board meeting?
All right.
Give us the extension. I'll make a motion to continue to, when in June? Where are we in June?
June 9th?
June 9th?
We're going to continue to June 9th.
I'll do that extension in the office tomorrow.
That'd be awesome, thank you. All right, so, motion is made, and seconded, continue till June 9th. Any discussion on the issue? Hearing, none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Okay, great. This is new.
Come on back.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Anyways, okay. Still want to keep going? Do you want to vote? Okay. All right, thank you. Next thing before us at this point is 11-14, which is Hale Everts on 28 Willard Street, Unit 2, for the applicant. No one here?
Is it Arthur on this?
Hale E-
Willard Street?
Willard Street? Who? Yeah, send them back in, please. We did.
Mr. Chairman, could I just refer to the staff report? I think there was a question about the other driveway, whether that had been signed off, and the answer to that question was yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The other driveway has been signed off, so there is no impediment associated with the other unit. The answer is yes, it is. It was extensively measured, and it, in fact, meets the 7 by 17 for Unit 1.
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Chairman, so the application in front of you is for a second driveway curb cut on a lot that is composed of two condo units. There is a existing driveway on one end of the lot, we're talking about putting it on the other end of the lot. There's more than 100 feet between these two driveways. They would both be dimensionally compliant. We're talking about proposing enough for two stacked residential parking spaces, where you would otherwise have one parking space. The important thing on this location, I think, is that this lot is right at the corner of Willard Street, and what my client finds is that when they park there, it actually creates an impediment to the traffic, because it creates a bottleneck at the corner. And it's, and if you have a driveway there, it would open up that corner quite a bit and open up the sightlines. So in this case, I think creating the two stacked spaces instead of one public space, and then also creating something that would forever free up the sightlines of that corner would be in the public safety and traffic interest.
Board members?
I have one little thing.
Please.
Is it, is it in the floodplain? Are you going to have to go to the Concom?
Yes, I believe it's in the...
So you're going to have to file with conservation?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Catherine, for your record, just, I'm going to deviate for a second, just in case you didn't notice, Mr. McGlaughlin left tonight, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from the board? Andrew, I'm sorry, this is a new application, of course?
No.
No, this has been open for a bit.
Correct.
I'm just trying to check in with you. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Anything else from the board? Staff? That's okay. Anyways, enough back and forth. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this? Seeing no comments at this point. Gentlemen, you're both activated on this, since this is a special permit. Do I hear a second to it? You're not sitting on this.
No, we didn't.
Were you, I'm sorry. Were you, I'm sorry.
She was here for it, yeah.
And I do, then, my apologies, Mr. Porch, I'm activating you specifically on this at this point. Thank you. Sorry, I thought you had missed this one. My apologies. Well, that's what I was trying to ascertain, so I apologize for that. So, the motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on it? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That directly affect, Mr. Williams opposed. That's a four to one vote by this board. Okay. 12-14, which is, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. On 12-14, Daniel J. Casano, 33 Old South Road. Good evening.
Hi, Teddy King, survey, just to answer some questions. Do you have any?
Board members?
The only question I have is the driveway. We're going to have, oh, so Lot 8B is not going to be have a driveway on Korea. That's already there. There's already a cop there right now, right?
Yeah. Right now, the existing house has a cop on both roads.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else? This is, go ahead, ask.
Andrew, we don't have the full site plan here. But Teddy, is Casano's across from Blueberry, or is it up far enough, more than 25 feet away from it? If there was a curb cut on the Lot 8B, which is the one closest to us?
It would be more than 25 from Grove.
Okay, because there was that issue about no curb cut within 25 feet without a special permit. I just want to make sure we didn't lose something in the translation.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, if the board is inclined to approve this, the condition I recommend is that the driveway for the corner lot is, would remain on Korea, and there would be a restriction against it going onto South Shore Road.
So, one, the 8B would be on South Shore, and Casano would keep the one he's got on Korea Lane?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Good enough? This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this. Mr. Markins, you're activated for this, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously.
Motion to approve with Lot 8B. Where'd Lot 8A go? We just not have it?
It was Lot 8A.
Itself.
Does one.
Yeah. With Lot 8C having its, maintaining its driveway from Korea Lane, and 8B having its driveway from South Shore Road. Got it?
Sounds like it. If that's the motion, go ahead. Motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. I need to step out for a second.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want me to keep going?
Yeah. Do you want to bring up the next one?
Sure. Okay. Everybody sitting up here is in play. 13-14, Stephen Welch, 13 Waydale Road. Andrew, do you want to, is there anybody here to present this one? Steve?
Good evening. Stephen Welch, applicant, here to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Chair, in the planning board, I mean, in the planning staff recommendation, both conditions are that you need to find that this is actually a better approach, and it's completely consistent with safe practices, so we recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, going to open it to the public. Anybody else want to make a comment about this? All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Nat's made a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded by Sylvia. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Would that finding? Yes, Andrew made a finding.
Your two findings are that it's not contrary to the historic and architectural quality.
And the other one is that it's a better situation than what exists now.
Every letter says the same.
Not contrary to safe traffic.
Safe traffic considerations. Nat's made that motion. Is there a second? Sylvia's made a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to Fisher Lane subdivision, under Long Law Beach Road. Do we have anything going on here, Andrew, that we need to agree on?
We're in the process. Mr. Chairman, as I outlined in my staff report, we're in the process of getting a finalized opinion from Town Council, and we don't have that yet. So, if that's, you know, still important to the board, it's probably best to continue. We'll sign an extension and offer the continuance tonight until the law is drafted.
Thank you, that'd be appreciated.
I'll make a motion to continue Fisher Lane subdivision to June 9th, and get an extension from the applicant in the office.
Got it. Motion's made and seconded for discussion. Yes, ma'am. What was that submitted?
It goes back at least five months.
So, you were here for this one?
No.
Okay, so.
No, we can't do this, no.
We're waiting anyway, so. No, I haven't. But all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. 7661, Woodland Hill subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodett for the applicant. I'm here with Don Bracken, obviously. Also with us tonight, Jim Jackless and Jim Grant, developers here. We, since the last hearing, I know Don has spoken with Mr. Pesci. We haven't submitted anything formally, but we obviously expect any of Mr. Pesci's concerns to be conditions of the permit. In addition, I submitted draft subdivision documents to you. I will apologize. They were late in submitting to the end of last week, but they are very standardized documents that I know you've seen a number of times before. Architectural review, committee, certain restrictions on the lots, et cetera. And finally, I know I mentioned in my letter at the end of the week, the, and this was a discussion point last hearing, but the applicant is willing to limit the amount of second dwellings in the subdivision to restrict five of the lots to be single-family dwelling only, with no second dwelling.
Did you ask which lot? That was the question, yes, sir.
What we discussed is the two lots down here, I think there are two, July, A, B, and C, and then these two lots here. Just some of the smaller lot subdivision.
Sorry. It's okay. Any other questions from the board on this application? Go ahead.
I think we talked about it the last time. I know Cormac brought it up, Cormac Collier. And I think those house envelopes need to move away from Dead Horse Valley, and those need to be the ones that don't have secondary dwellings. That one up on the upper right is too close. The big one down on the bottom one is too close. I know those are just concept footprints, but I've thought all along, everything down on Dead Horse Valley should move back from that property line, and those two lots should have only one dwelling. So, that may require some fooling around with this, but I'm not changing my mind on that. Because Dead Horse Valley, for other, another board purposes, is considered public view. And I'm having trouble with how close that one in particular is, and how big that one is hanging over Dead Horse Valley, and thus in full view of everything beyond it, including Vessel, whatever is over there, Vessel Lane.
Right.
And there's a road that does run behind it, that's not this one, but there is a road that runs behind the hospital that has the potential of being open, that will also be able to view this whole thing. And I think it needs to push back from the top of Dead Horse. So.
Right, and, you know, unfortunately, those are the biggest lots that would be able to handle them. They also narrow in the front, too. I mean, I'm not opposed to, I mean, we could certainly talk about the sort of the footprint and whether that can be changed, or the envelope, but I think, you know, what we have proposed in the subdivision documents as well is a 10-foot buffer back there as well. So, I mean, I. And, I mean, it's vegetated in Dead Horse Valley as well. I mean, no one's going to touch that. I mean, I guess that's, it's pretty densely wooded in there right now. I mean, so I don't think the town is going to mow that.
This whole thing is pretty closely wooded. And it looks from your plan, they're cutting the whole thing, except for a few cedars left here and there. We've got the hardwoods and everything. And you're going to, you're going to take along the road, but I, it needs to go this way for me. I need to have the closest building envelope on that upside particularly moved over to the left.
Here?
Yeah. And have that lot, those key lots, be the ones that see it. And then you have the lots sort of already.
So, this is what you're talking about?
I'm talking about those two.
Okay.
Whatever's closest to Dead Horse Valley, I believe, are those two, sort of this direction.
I mean, this is merely on the setback.
I know. That's the problem.
I mean.
You know, it has a lot of vegetation, five feet, or even half. It needs to move to the left. That's been my concern, the last time, it's still my concern. The rest of it, I think it's, you know, it is what it is. That's my concern. Plus, what you're not showing is what's around us. You've got very concentrated, you don't have a lot of, the budding properties there, so you can't really see it. You don't have a lot of plant from it, so you don't show that subdivision anymore. But I think you might want to give us a little more, a little reduced copy the next time, and show where the building envelopes are, and what the surrounding properties are, because we don't have any of that. I have a lot of paper, but no map.
You mean in terms of showing the structures on them?
Yeah, I know you don't want to do the footprints, because I haven't done any of that.
Are you on the surrounding properties?
Yeah, what's going on. Because if we have an opportunity to lessen the impact of something that people are freaked out of, you know, a newspaper under the map, then I think we should take the opportunity to lessen the impact, particularly on the open spaces in Dead Horse Valley.
I guess it would help, I mean, I can, you know, I mean, I can talk to the applicants now about, you know, having these two swapped instead of, you know, nobody's other lots. I mean, I guess, I mean, because.
I don't mind the other ones up in the front there. You don't. Everybody out there on the side, that's what I was asking. It's just it's so close to that, that south side.
So, you don't want a second dwelling on these two lots?
Right, and I want the building to push the interior up that crap a little bit. But that'll be able to be accessed maybe better when we have the collateral lots, you know, the ones that are around, you can see where everything is, for sure, because we're so concentrated on that one big thing right there. That's just me.
We, you know, I think we have, we have an aerial, I mean, you know, and I think it's part of the packet, or, excuse me, it's part of the filing. I mean.
Part of the site analysis report, Linda, is aerial. There's also the assessors' map.
Do you want to bring that down for a second, Mr. Bracken? Please. Thank you. Do you need a second, or can I go to Andrew here? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I wasn't at your last meeting, so I don't know what your discussion was about setting building envelopes and a.
I don't recollect that being at our last meeting at all, so this is.
Only about that side, format, I agree with you. Only just that one side, the HCC blocks.
Okay, because in general, building envelopes are set as part of cluster subdivisions, not as part of normal convention.
Thank you.
If you are asking for additional setbacks, it would be helpful to have what those are, not just, needs to be bigger. So, if you're asking for 20, you're talking about 20 feet on the eastern property line?
South.
And the, because there's two, the property borders public parkland on, to the east and to the south, and it borders the cemetery on the west.
Right.
And as we've discussed, it borders other property eligible for subdivision across the road on the north. So, I don't know what, I don't know what looking at additional maps is going to tell you here.
We did talk about cluster, but it was too small for that.
Right.
That did come up the last meeting when you were here. If they could pull everything in off the setbacks for the cemetery, the open parkland, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right.
And just sort of set those particular lots with a little deeper setback because of the sensitivity of the land around it.
Right.
So, I didn't, that's something you can talk about in between now and the next meeting. I'm still concerned about that. You don't need an extension.
So, what would you like to propose, then? Just so that there's a clear discussion to be had. Here, 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet?
I was going to say 20, but, you know, I don't know what's in question.
Well, I mean.
Because of the shape of the blocks.
They're all equal.
Well.
They'd also reduce them, increase the size of the lot. Whatever you want to say.
Right, reduce the total number of dwellings.
You know, people come up with something that would work for your 20, or 10, or let's say 20, instead of 17.
Do you exist?
10 is just too close. First, you the cemetery. I don't think anybody at this time, if their structures were there, because it just, nothing's ever happened.
Hold on, we jumped from Dead Horse Valley to the cemetery, so let's be real clear here with the applicant. What specifically we're proposing here. So, Linda, can you give me some guidance for them?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, too, so the existing side yard setback is five feet, correct?
It's our one.
It's our one. So, I mean, you know, so you're asking for four times the setback?
That's where I'm trying to add, well, there's two.
Just for 20 feet?
That's the first thing I'm asking. The second thing I'm asking is, because it jumped from Dead Horse Valley to the cemetery, so now I'm really unclear. All right, so what is it that you are specifically requesting of the applicant?
Isaiah Old goes a five side, five rear.
Right.
As I say, I don't want to tell them, ask them. That's a big, as I say, I don't want to tell them, ask them 20, 25, 15. I mean, I won't see what we're pulling in. I'm doing on the lot line, but they're not. It's sort of a little bit of a place where I can get that many lots.
So you're fine with where the lot lines are at this point, it's just trying to get-
And there's cottages and all that stuff. I'm just worried around how close they are to public, and the cemetery.
Mr. Chairman, just the cemetery has the road, the road, the road has a buffer.
It's not, I mean, it's there, but it's not abutting it.
It's not anything. You're saying, what width you offer a 10?
I mean, we, you know, we, the documents I submitted, it's obvious it's up for discussion, was a 10-foot vegetated buffer.
Around the whole thing?
Well, around open spaces and not, you know, around the road ways, obviously, but, I mean, those are, have bigger setbacks, anyway.
You're talking, that would be northwest and south, or east?
Well, I think it'd be a little broader side.
I mean, that's really what we're proposing. That's what we discussed at the, that's really, the discussion we had with Cormac was, you know, kind of a vegetated buffer there, because everything's so vegetated behind it, it would blend in more. So that's why we proposed that, which is really-
Is that a vegetation between it and the cemetery? I'd say there's none.
Well, if you keep it.
Yeah.
Can I just, for clarity, that, I don't know what we're talking about, the southern property line, there's an, it's extensively vegetated to the south, is it not?
Yeah, and it's deep woods.
And then to the, to the east, it's the same dense level.
In the river.
That's the western side.
The western.
And that is where the road will be, and that's where Cato Lane is.
I know, the addition of spring. So you talked about this side, this side?
Yeah, it was just brought up in the hearing, that's why I mentioned it. We don't have that in the discussion.
I had agreed with him the last time, I agree with him this time, so do with it what you want.
I have one question.
Are we settled on this issue now? And the 10 feet is kind of where we're at, which is what you posed, Mr. Bode?
10 feet.
So, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Mark, thank you for the second.
Are the footprints maximum ground cover?
The ones that you see?
The ones that are displayed, yeah.
No, not entirely. They're all just different shapes, you know, the top hole is out, we put on a block.
Okay.
Maximum ground cover, 30%, so they probably bring 20, 30.
Okay, thanks.
Board members, is there anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no one approaching. It's a pleasure, the board.
Motion closed the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. You missed this one?
This is the third time, I think. Barry, this is the-
Well, this is actually only the second hearing, I think. Didn't we just open? Don?
We had two preliminary appointments.
It's just opened last month.
So, and you were here last month, so you can sit in on this one.
Mr. Chairman, just, Sylvia, did you review the tape or the?
No.
In order to exercise the Mullen rule, you need to sign a document saying that you reviewed the tape.
Right, but this just opened it last month.
She was here.
You were here?
She was here last month.
Not before that.
But there was-
The plan was here before, we left this coming down.
So you've been at every hearing, then?
If that was already submitted last month, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is only the second-
For clarity.
Yeah, this is only the second time this has been out of the gate, is what I'm understanding from everyone.
Okay.
There's been preliminary plans and stuff that have come up beforehand, which you may have missed, but that doesn't-
Okay, thank you.
That's okay, I know, we just, we all want to try to be clear here. Who did you activate for the last one? Linda, who's up on deck next?
Mr. Chairman, this is a subdivision, so-
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I apologize. I'm so locked into the special permit thing at the moment, so I'm funny. All right, so the motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those, without any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Eyes happy unanimously, pleasure of the board.
I guess I'm in a motion to endorse this with a 10-foot vegetated buffer, trying to maintain on the east and south end of the area, east and south?
Are we good with that? All right, so the motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Eyes happy unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to 7684, which is Pippin's Way subdivision modification number nine, 12th Gardner Road. Ms. Alger, good evening.
Yes, for the applicant, Sarah Alger, with me, Charlie Cadboyes, and Rob Welland for the applicant. Mr. Reed is here for the owner. Dan Malloy is our engineer, he's here as well, as are a number of concerned neighbors. You'll remember, we were here last month requesting a modification of this interior subdivision roadway, which was approved.
Yeah. That was given to us as part of the application.
Is there something you can do in the opposite of the motion, is there a deadline?
I assume so.
Yes. Yeah, sorry, this is just a little procedural thing from the last-
That's okay.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
I know, it's a long, it's a long night, let's get it right if we can.
Yes. Thank you, so, please.
Okay. What we're here for tonight is a request to reduce the improved width of Gardner Road itself from Poples Road down to the subdivision entrance. It's currently approved at 20 feet, and we're asking that it be reduced to 16 feet with two turnouts, as shown on the plan that Dan has submitted. We think that this is in, more in keeping with the rural road characteristic of similar roadways and also of this neighborhood, which is primarily dirt roads, although we do recognize that there's been some development of the area more in the past few years. Just by way of example, Moore Zen Lane, which is right across the street, is 14 feet. Something like Washington Pond Road, which is a kind of similar roadway, is 16.6. And then the unpaved roads in the area, Shimo Pond, is 14, and Shakama Road is 15. So, we think that not to create a speedway, but to create a roadway that works for what we're proposing, we'd like to go to 16 feet. In addition, I know that Anna Butter, who's here, I think, or maybe not to address it, has asked that portions of it not be paved. I'm not proposing that, but I want to note, I wanted to make note of the fact that I know that letter is in the packet.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I just, and I addressed this in the staff report, but I think for the new members, should remember that this was a litigated case.
Correct.
And the litigation is finalized and settled, and while I support the particular recommendation for the width reduction, I do remind the board of your obligation as to look at future access and emergency vehicles. There was a fire at this particular property where there was very difficult access during the time, and I think it's important that the applicant at the time proposed a 20-foot road in order not to request a waiver. So I'm a little concerned to hear more talk about rural character where that was already addressed by the court. I mean, I think that there, you know, there's some good examples that they brought forward. Mr. Pashi has confirmed from an engineering standpoint, it's possible, but I would highly dissuade you from changing that paving surface on a hill into a neighborhood that I think that it's not correct to say that it's had a little bit of development. You need to, if you haven't been down there, you need to take a look at the LUG-1 zoning and the results that have occurred there.
Yeah.
And there will be more development being proposed, more trips, more access, so.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify, it's Gardner Road and Pippins that we want to narrow?
Right.
Okay.
And I understand that, and I'm frankly surprised I heard the word "speedway" brought up tonight. Go ahead. Yeah, I know, and I'm just, I-
I went down there and saw it. That's a terrible thing.
Oh, it is a, absolutely, absolutely agreed.
Even though it probably won't be a speedway, it has to be a speedway or something, which I don't really like. When I drove down there, I know some of the bank, Sarah, it's got to be about 10-foot high, so it's going to be a problem when an emergency vehicle goes down there, especially a tire. We drove down there and there's somebody constructing something just beyond that Pippin's Way, and it blocked the whole road.
Uh-huh.
I would be against me constructing a 14.
Well, it will be, it will be widened significantly from where it is today. I think it's, what's it at now, Dan?
Right now, there is a 10-deep wide.
So-
You're talking about the spot she's talking about.
Yeah.
The spot, just to add, the spot you're talking about?
Yeah.
Right there where the walls are tall is where the entrance to Pippin's Way is, it was nine foot six wide.
Right.
So, nine foot six, nine foot nine, I physically measured it.
I bought my tires, I've got a dog.
So we're talking about adding five feet, excuse me, six, six and a half feet to that width, which will significantly improve the safety there.
Yeah. I think there's at least be one, those people not down.
Yeah. I don't think any-
I think-
I understand that.
Yeah.
I know that it should be reduced.
I would, I just would say, I don't think anyone's arguing that the road, A, needs to be widened and it needs to be improved beyond what it is today. I absolutely agree with that. I would just say that I think 16 feet is sufficient width for both Gardner and the subdivision with those, with those turnouts. And I also want to add that we would never suggest not paving that hill, absolutely has to be paved. Otherwise, it would wash out into the wetland and we'd have all sorts of issues, so. Yeah, that's, that's absolutely not anything that we would even entertain, so.
Anyone else on the board? Ms. Alger, I, just a few things, on Gardner Road, that road is going to be a pass and repass road, whereas Pippin's Way is going to, where you finally wind up at.
Right.
So I, for one, remember having sat on this thing from the very beginning, and I remember the intensity of the subdivision that was happening in that area. So, you know, I, for one, sitting on this board, am not inclined to want to change the width of Gardner Road in any way, shape, or form. I think that we were pretty clear when we first approved this subdivision about the things that needed to take place, and I would dare say to you, that was vetted through court of law with, with the same outcome, okay? So this has really withstood the test of a lot of different eyes and people looking at it. Now, I guess my question is with Pippin's Way, is there any thought here, if you want to reduce the roadway, to reducing, because it's gotten kind of intense in there, to reducing any of secondary dwellings on the lots, or reducing the number of bedrooms on any of the lots in Pippin's Way?
Well, we did, as you recall, at last month's hearing, as part of the change in the surface of Pippin's-
Just refresh your memory.
We reduced the number of bedrooms in five of the second dwellings to two.
To two, okay.
If there was some consideration on the board's part to reduce the width of Gardner to 16 feet, I think we could reduce those five second dwellings to one bedroom each.
And, and what would that leave us with? The grand total of how many lots in the entire subdivision? So that's five, and how many?
There are eight, there are eight buildable lots.
There are eight buildable lots? All right, so three would have the pleasure of how many bedrooms?
Well, that's a, that's a square footage calculation.
Title five.
Under Title V, so I don't-
Kind of ballparked me in a little bit.
Two of the lots would probably be six or seven bedrooms, and then there are the big six and eight, a lot in that.
And, refresh my memory, each lot has the ability for a second dwelling as well, too?
Correct.
So all eight lots have the ability to have second dwellings. You're suggesting that five of the lots would be restricted to one bedroom per dwelling?
Per second dwelling, correct.
Per second dwelling. I could make the argument for Pippin's Way, but Gardner Road, I'm having a tough time with, on that. You know, if you wanted to go down to the one bedroom, I could kind of, I could kind of make an argument for it, but when I start looking at those other three lots, what you're planning on doing, that one's sitting a little bit tougher with me. Go ahead.
We have, who'd you go to?
I'm sorry, Sylvia's at the floor.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to you in a minute.
The number of 10 ones, to me, doesn't add as much as the number of cars that load a little more. That house will have a car, and this one will have a motor. So you just go back to same amount of traffic that's being moved.
Well, not necessarily, because I think the argument, just to expand a little bit on the thinking, the argument in reducing the number of bedrooms in a secondary dwelling is that then it's less likely to be, it's more likely to become something that you use as an adjunct to your home, as opposed to something that you rent out separately, where you have two separate families in two separate homes, which is what happens to a lot of second dwellings. So you're actually, by limiting the number of bedrooms, you're changing the way that second dwelling is used, and by changing the way the second dwelling is used, you're changing the intensity and the number of vehicle trips and vehicles that will be associated with that building.
Well, that's a nice concept, but I don't know, we actually did, we kind of, most, and I don't have one house, so I could go there.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda, then I'll come to you.
I understand the history of Pippin's Way. We're certainly dealing with Pippin's Way at the HTC at the moment with seven applications related to it tomorrow night. We have roads that are more heavily trafficked than this, that are less than 20 feet wide. And there is no support from those neighbors out there that they want a straight 880 feet or whatever it is of 20 feet wide, straight shot. I know what that did to my road on South Shore Road, when they took the bend out of it and flattened it out and made it 20 feet wide with a bike path. It's a drag race every night, going back and forth to the beach. I can well understand why they want to maintain 16 feet. Now, having traveled that road in an ambulance, that was not entertaining, and I think 20 feet is excessive for a rural road. I do agree that it probably should be paved, having gone out there. Both of them should be paved, so that's off the table, as far as I'm concerned, but I think 20 feet is too wide. Main roads aren't even 20 feet in some sections. I think we should go down to 16 feet, clear 20, but down to 16 feet, and I think that is reasonable. And the neighbors, I don't think, have as big an issue with that at all, the people that use that road. I just think 20 feet is excessive. I don't remember the last time I actually personally said 20 feet clear was necessary. So I'm fine with 16 feet clear on both roads. So, I'm fine with 16 feet clear on both roads paved.
Mr. Chairman, just to help you think about this, the, what they're proposing is 16-foot wide travelway, plus a foot of Cape Cod berm, plus a foot or two feet of shoulder. So, we're, we're really providing, in my opinion, making it narrower, narrower, but still providing enough width for the support of the neighborhood, slows everyone down.
Yep.
I mean, I, I think you all understand that, but at least you know that you have 18 feet of pavement, at least 18 feet of pavement, and, and a couple of turnarounds for the emergency use. It, it, it seems to be adequate, but I, I offer that for your consideration.
Plus, when I, when you travel on it, you are traveling on nine feet, eight and a half feet, 10 feet, 12 feet. So, the addition of six feet on an average of clear roadway before you can get to a berm in a clear area on the outside of that is astronomical compared to what you've got right now. That's a whole nother car width. So, that's why I'm not, I don't have a big issue going to 16. I appreciate Pippin's Way, they've gone on before, both Nat and myself, but I was never in favor of 20 feet on this thing. Plus a berm, plus clear, I mean, I got enough at 16. I think that's reasonable.
Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, I just, there's a couple of things. First of all, I do think there, that the proposed compromise is reasonable, considering what the board discussed in the Pippin's Way decision. At that time, the area was under consideration for sewer extension, which would have had no limits on the bedrooms. So, I think the fact that, number one, it's been modified to not extend the sewer, number two, that there are some restrictions inherent with the Title V, you know, has, has lowered the intensity of the development. The, the concept of the guest quarters is something I talked to the applicants with, and I, I think that, again, the board at the time discussed two fully independent houses versus a house with guest quarters, which I think that the offer gets us to and helps to lessen it somewhat. I mean, the more bedrooms you have, the more they can be independently rented, and, you know, I think this particular neighborhood has moved towards that style of housing. So, I think that the, you know, with the shoulders, with the, with the curbs that at least gets the car, allows the cars to get out, and the, the reduction in the, in density is something the board should consider, you know, as part of that proposal. So, I think that's a good compromise, and again, it is in line with the board's discussion at the time, which the prior, prior owners were not willing to give any, if you remember, they, they said, "We're not giving any concessions on these. We're not going to limit any second dwellings." We wanted, they wanted to maximize and have as few waivers as possible. And I think Dan could corroborate that.
Thank you. Anything else, board members? Yeah, please.
Just to roll back in history a little bit, Bernal Street, when we got the compromise to go to 18 feet on Bernal Street, was, the original proposal was 20. You have to remember, Plainfield was paved, Clifton was paved, so we had this like big dirt road to get to paved roads. Stupid, right? But that's just the way it ended up. But in this case, it's the reverse. You have nothing paved, you have lug one zoning, which is interesting out there. You have Shimmer Road, and North Road connect to the other end of this, I don't know what it is when it goes past Reggie's House, is it still Gardner? I don't even know. Whatever it is, but I know where I'm going.
It changes to South Valley, I think, at some point.
Something.
It goes Shakama one way and South Valley the other.
But there's two different, but it's still the same, like you, you end up out past Judge Reggie's, and you end up at the thing, and that's where North Road connects over to Shimmer.
Correct.
So, it splits the, the cars up a little bit, too, to get out to these places. You know, some people might go Shimmer to get to some of those.
And the east side, just so you know, of Gardner is LUG3.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the split line.
So, what I'm saying is, I mean, the future development is gonna come, but it's gonna be a little at a time. This is probably the last big one that's gonna happen out there. You know, thank you for giving those measurements, because I've, you're right on those measurements on those roads. What was the width that you wanted to make that piece going down? You wanted to make that 16 as well?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, right?
The whole thing.
Okay. And that's such an improvement, because you can't, a car has to back up. Once you hit past Al Silva's, you have to stop or back up. So, that's important. As far as the overall flow and pass and repass, you've never been able to pass and repass in that spot. So, I see that as a huge improvement to the whole overall getting out there, you know? So, I'm in favor of 16 with the berms on the outside. Thanks.
Anyone else? You're welcome. All right, this is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this, please come forward, please.
Patricia Halsted.
Hi.
Attorney for a couple of the butters, one Brace Young, who's in the audience tonight, and Bill Richards and Gary McBurney. They live at 6 Gardner Road, and they're the people that wrote the letter that Sarah referred to, that I think might be in your packets. They're in support of the applicant's modification request tonight, and they would like you to consider their request that you not require paving all of Gardner Road and maybe reduce that requirement somewhat. Gravel and parts of it would be appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone, please?
Good evening. I'm Brace Young. First of all, I'd like to thank Sarah and the developers for making this proposal. As you know, this has been a, a long emotional discussion around the development of the property. If I may, I'd like to give a little history of, of my activity. I live on 7 Shakama Road, but I also bought the land from Al Silva, which is the northeast side that we just talked about. So, I purchased the land in 1993, and I, and I bought, I built a, a home for my family in 1997. I moved to Nantucket year-round in 1999 with my children, who were three and just born, and they had the good fortune of living in a very rural and exceptionally beautiful part of Nantucket. They also had the good fortune of every Sunday, having Sunday dinner with Al Silva, who became, you know, candidly, one of my, you know, really dear friends, and my children to this day, you know, really worship Al, and he shared, you know, extraordinary stories about growing up on the Cape and growing up in the area. Al approached me about two and a half or three years before he died, and he said, he said, "Brice, I'd really like to keep the area as rural as it's been in my lifetime." And he said, "I'll sell it to you if you promise me three things, that you allow me to use the property as it is for the rest of my life. Number two, can you clean up the pond?" You know, at one point, it was full of weeds and things like that, of which the, after a fair amount of time discussing with the Concom, we, we got done, and it's a, it's a beautiful, clean pond. And he said, you know, "Please don't develop it and keep it as rural as possible." I promised him, you know, and it was something that I felt, to the extent that I had the ability to do, you know, I understand that we've got a different world that we live in today, but to the extent that we can, you know, it was something that I felt personally very strongly about. The land that I purchased from Al was zoned for three acres, as Sarah mentioned. I removed the subdivision, it was my decision to preserve it, as I promised Al, and I'd like you to consider just the, the nature of the area, and I'd like you to consider the fact that I think the road, you know, while my preference would be for it not to change much, you know, I think that the 16-foot compromise is reasonable. I think the current developers have been dramatically more reasonable than the, the previous regime. It, it does provide the ability to pass, while my preference would not to have it paved either. I think the 16-foot is more important to me than the context of everything. The preservation of the quality of the wetlands and the pond is very important, you know, consistent with my pledge to Al. And I think, you know, the safety of the kids. I look forward to my children, who are 18 now and 15, and they feel, you know, very passionately about where they've grown up, and I know other people in the community do. I let people walk their dogs all across the property. Al made original paths through the land. He used to point out to my children that he had photographing stations up in the trees for the deer. Maybe we can believe that maybe he's doing other things than photographing up there. But, you know, it is a very rural part of Nantucket. We're very lucky that we're where we are, and to the extent that you would consider, you know, narrowing the scope down to 16 feet, I think it would be a reasonable compromise in the context of what's been obviously a charged debate about the area. So, again, I applaud the developer, and I thank Sarah for being an advocate of this, and while I, you know, I appreciate some of the positions here, I think it would be a, it would be very welcome in the community. I don't know anybody in Shimmer Pond, anywhere along the road, that would like it any wider. I think it's very consistent. I think most would prefer it to remain unpaved, but I, you know, I appreciate the position that you're taking, and, you know, if we could come to a reasonable compromise to narrow it in the context of this long debate, I think it would be a great outcome. So, I appreciate your consideration. I think it's, you know, it's a special place, and to the extent that we can leave it a more special place for future generations, I think people will look back and, and applaud that decision, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Bruce Benny, 16 Gardner Road, and I second Brace's opinion. I live at the, what some call the Dead Man's Curve, which is right at the bottom of Gardner Road, where it takes a 90-degree angle. Anything that will speed up traffic to the entry of my property is a very bad thing. I live it every day, and I also have seen that many of the residents that live below Pippin's Way do take Shimmer Pond Road to access their properties from below. A good percentage, because it's a much easier access for most of that area of Shimmer to the east of Shimmer Pond Road. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? What's that?
Motion?
Go ahead.
Any question?
Don, how far are we, how, I'm sorry. I mean, Dan, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the last one.
It's getting late here.
How far are we going past Pippin's entrance? I forgot to ask that before. And you can't really tell.
Mr. Mr. Catch, please.
Is it where that infiltration system is?
It's about 100 feet, roughly. If you get to the bottom of the hill where it widens out-
So, we're going just past Miller's Way? Miller's Lane, or whatever it's called, Miller's, uh-
Not that far, no. As you come down-
So, it's no way it's near Bruce's house? Okay.
Do you know where the driveway is? It goes into the press site right now?
Yes.
You're going, actually, right about where that driveway comes out now, roughly.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And this motion is made in-
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, guys happy and hands, pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to allow the reduction in width of both Pippin's Way and Gardner Road to 16 feet, with a one-foot berm on each side and another foot of clear, or is it two feet of clear?
Of clear.
Of clear beyond the berm.
Turnouts.
And the turnout, as presented, it will be paved. Both of them will be paved as presented.
And-
Gardner Road is, Gardner Road is paved, Pippin's Way is shell.
Shell.
Yeah. She may.
Yeah.
So, all the gardens are all to be paved, and Pippin's Way is shell.
And, and still got the apron.
Still got the apron going up it.
Does that include the thought about the reduction down to one bedroom for the five lots?
Yeah, is that what you're offering, Sarah? That five lots will have a reduction in the secondary dwelling down to one bedroom?
I'm sorry, run that by me again?
The-
On five lots?
On five lots, the secondary dwelling will be reduced down to one bedroom.
No. I, I heard specifically that it was on the entire lot, not just one of the two.
No, they're not having a, a one-acre lot with one bedroom.
There's eight, eight lots and-
There's eight lots total.
Right.
And five would have the one-bedroom, second dwelling restriction.
Right. As opposed to four in one and five in another.
No, just, ah, just, it's okay. Yeah, go ahead, you get your answer.
It's gonna be paved. Gardner Road's gonna be paved, as proposed.
But they're proposing 16 feet.
Apparently, that's what was already agreed to, that's what it was.
We have those on shells.
At the last meeting, you approved a change of that cer, the interior surface to shell at the, at the old width, though, correct?
Correct.
And, and what, a con, what-
With the, with the, a, with large apron.
Right, still with the, no, still with the same apron, but the interior, the surface of the interior roadway would change to shell.
The apron is gonna be the same. It's longer, deeper, right?
No. The apron at the entrance into the subdivision.
It's gotta be wider than a normal apron, that we keep that for drive.
That's right.
And, and longer, right?
Right.
It's, it's always the old one that washed down that. We have the natural veins like you have. It all was washed down that, with the apron.
Sylvia, it's about 45 feet.
That's what I'm asking. It's longer than that.
It's about 45 feet, it's totally, really rough.
Yes, it is, the, the apron will stay the same, the only thing that will change in the interior road is the width down to 16. So, it will still have a cobblestone apron.
And how's that going down?
For which road?
Paving the Gardner Road.
Gardner Road, the paving total length is approximately 1,000 feet from Bubblis Road.
You know where that construction is going on, it's going to the bend? Where that stuff, that's a backup. If you go past, if you go past Pippin Way, there's a house on the left, that's been worked on. If you go past Pippin Way, right, there's a house on the left, that's been left on, and those guys were mobbing the road. Is that applied on with paving? That's where they ended, that's where it turns. Or it turns to where it turns down there. Well, it doesn't go straight to the bend.
There's no, there's no house, there's no, there's no dwelling after Pippin's Way.
There's something being dumped there, because the guys were there and stuck inside.
Is it further down the road, or you think it's further up?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Down the road.
Paving the pass, it's like, 1,000 feet. Right, the pass, Pippin's Way is about 100 years.
Yes.
That's the way it's always been. And in that, in that layout, there's also subsurface infiltration. So, reduce the runoff, prevent the runoff from heading down into here. Right now, it's just all very soft and shimmery to the lot. This will alleviate that problem, where it's soft and treacherous. It's gonna have to be removed.
Is that injured? I'm not sure where you got stuck with that.
Right about here is where it's real narrow, 9.6, 9.5, wide to 16.
Somewhere in here. That's where we're doing something, something, something on the left. I couldn't get down there.
There's a driveway to the new towers? You might, you might be talking about these right here. Way past-
Whatever you're dealing with, something, something natural. Something without, there are obviously, I don't know, lots.
The garden is dropped and stuff. It was doing. What I'd like to bring up something, you know, some of these aprons and stuff. I've been driving around checking, you know, I'm checking, you know, my stuff, and when they put in those Belgium rock aprons, where you turn in, the sides don't seem to break down, but when you have the paving, you know, the asphalt, they're all broken down. So, it's, it might, I thought, was that they should have at least maybe a three-foot berm on those sides to keep it from breaking down. I mean, that's just-
Yeah, no, you're right.
I thought, it is the old size, because it looks terrible, and it is terrible, because you, you know, we go off the edge. The same thing's happening on the road. They're going down and drawing.
But they've got a berm on this one, which is stabilizing the side of the road, and then the pavement from Gardner Road goes right into the Belgium watch, heavy bike, the Belgium watch. So, it's not taking, the Belgium, Belgium watch coming into the flare into Pippin's Way. So, that should stabilize that.
I'm, I'm just wrong with that there, because I see it everywhere. All these roads are broken down.
Well, it hasn't helped if they filed off to burns on the side of the- Well, heaven help if they plowed off to burns on the sides of the roads all the way to my yard. Yes, they did. There's not one berm left. You fall right off the side of the road on most roads, it's down plowed.
Yeah.
All set?
Yeah.
All right, so hearing no further discussion at this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, that's bringing us down into previous plans, yes. First thing before us on previous plans, 7084, Arrowhead Drive subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
The, there's three items on this. There is to waive the landscape buffer, Form J on the included lots and legal documents. So when it comes to the landscape buffer, this is a buffer between the back of the lots and the airport runway.
Yep.
There's correspondence at the fence, there's correspondence, well, it was on the plan and we accepted it. It wasn't that we required it. The airport has contacted us saying they don't want landscaping in that location, so I think that's fairly easy for the board to waive that requirement. In mind, I don't, the...
Did we get the sidewalk spend with this?
No, this is, this is a whole new request for the...
Oh.
Yeah. When...
I mean, I'm just saying, you did get that sidewalk money, right?
We did get sidewalk money, yes.
Nobody thought, I was going on against you.
There are, there's some, you know, sometimes when we waive a landscape requirement, we ask for a contribution for nearby public land. I haven't thought of an actual amount, but...
It probably would be pointless at Delta Fields. They don't need screening there. Airport Park, the whole point of that park is that it's wide open, or would that give us a little buffer along the edges?
Well, there's tree, you know, there's trees there. I don't know if there's along the edge.
Well, Southern Airport Road, so I think the Delta Field should be off the table.
Okay.
You don't need screening there. They've got screening everywhere.
You don't have to substitute, you can just simply waive it, but...
Right, just completely waive it if you want.
Anyway, it was just an idea.
Okay.
You want to move on?
I, well, we need to act on it.
Should we make, we have to have a motion to waive the requirement?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to waive the requirement for land, does the alternate sit on these things?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive the requirement for the screening.
Endorse the Form J?
Endorse the Form J.
And the legal documents also have to be endorsed?
Yeah, part of my motion.
Thank you. Want to just wait one second?
Okay.
What, yeah?
I, I, right. The Form J, I guess there was some late-breaking request to not endorse the Form J.
All right, so really, it's just, let's just act on the, and the legal documents are off the table, too, are they?
The legal documents are still on.
So just the Form J.
The Form J is the only one that's out.
Right, so you're going to, you're going to waive the landscape buffer.
Yeah, and approve the, the legal documents.
Yes, thank you. Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. Legal documents for Pippin's Way subdivision?
Recommend approval.
Just can't get away from it. I'll make a motion to endorse the remaining documents for Pippin's Way.
And do I hear a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. You have Matthew Sanford, who's requesting withdrawal, so make a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. Lance and Martha Kelly.
I'll make a motion to correct the errors. There was a problem between laying court and ours.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, is it reendorse the decision in the plan?
That's fine, yep.
That'll work, yeah. Motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's okay. Eyes happy unanimously. Arthur Gar Sparrow, 20 Mary Ann Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. John Trudell.
I'll make a motion to approve the minor site plan changes.
All right, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. Point Breeze Hotel, clarification on room adjustments.
In your packet?
I know what it is.
Is, is a...
Letter.
Is a letter which explains it. It's generally, it's less intensive than what you approved. Staff feels that you can't approve this without a further, oh, look, hearing.
I was over there today. I'll make a motion that it is a minor modification. Is that where we go first?
Yep.
Yeah.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second, discussion, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, you could appoint an alternate on this if you...
Oh, is it a special person?
Yes.
Mr. Borcher, you're going to sit in on this, okay? I'm so sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, 5 to 0. Thank you. Preliminary plans, those were withdrawn, so we should accept a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, were they not?
I'm going to ask for continuance and expect to withdraw them at the next hearing on both of them.
All right, so...
I'll make a motion to continue Scarlet Way, 7682 and 7683 Sinclair Lane subdivision to June 9.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. You have notice of intents in there. Is there any other business that has to come before this board at the moment?
No, but I'd like to say thank you to Catherine and Andrew and Leslie for getting those things up to the Attorney General in such an expedited fashion. Because I don't believe we've ever had an approval before August, except for when we adopted 1972. 1972 zoning bylaw was adopted in the middle of July, but this is the first time I've ever seen anything before August.
I agree.
Yes.
Good job.
July 13th.
Motion to adjourn, someone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. When you were talking about Arrowhead, Mr. Chairman, all I was going to say is we've been making regular inspections. Things are looking good out there. They're making good progress. Landscaping's going in. They haven't done final paving yet, but they're not ready.